Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Monday, April 7, 2025, town planning board meeting. Thank you, planning board members. Mostly, everybody here is expecting to come on. But we do have a forum, so we can begin. We have received the meeting agenda. No changes. I'm just going to let them know that it's not going to change. You have Jim's meeting notes. They've been distributed. You all have a chance to redo them. Any questions? Jim, please. May I have a motion to approve the meeting notes? So go second, please. All those in favor? Opposed, extension, motion carries. You have in draft form, March 17 minutes. Do you have any corrections, additions, edits? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the March 17 minutes? Motion by Tom. Second by Sean. All those in favor? Opposed, extension, motion carries. Our correspondence and announcements. There is nothing. I have a couple of announcements, correspondence regarding specific plans. We have received late today a request for an adjournment of the public hearing from the April meeting to the May 19 meeting. So I am asking for a motion for an adjournment and a continuation of the public hearing for specific plans. The application going to the May 19, 2025 planning board agenda. May I have that motion? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, extensions. Jim, this is somewhat in response to a letter that was sent to the applicant asking them, telling them that it would be helpful to confirm the proposed driveway location, so that we can conclude the discussion of the proposed driveway location. And so we asked them to confirm whether we will be moving the driveway to Barry Tyler or whether we continue to move forward with the driveway directly on that group. And we asked if we will reconfigure the driveway to be off Barry Tyler Drive or can we expect to receive the revised plans in the return review. The response that we got today, we gave them a deadline until May 1st. The response was they were asking for the continuation because they are awaiting the D E C jurisdictional determination and not that they can answer the questions that we posed in the letter. So that is what's transpired regarding that application today. So now they will appear currently after the January meeting from the April agenda. Gretchen will do as she did before, which is to notice that the next agenda. Correct? Okay. Any questions? So that takes us to our new applications for this evening. The first being the application of Edwin and Mary Jo Henke, 11 Jones Street Site Plan Review for the Construction of a Sunroom and Park.
Good evening, I'm Lawrence Kandarkac, representing Edwin and Mary Jo Henke, the proud owners of 11 Jones Street in Roinkwood. There is currently a concrete slab to the rear of the house to the south. Apparently had a wanting over at one time. That sort of material, except that their proposal is to direct an exact same footprint of that slab when we do a sunroom and a mudroom addition. Right now, you enter the back of the house, a door in the center of the back, right into a very small rear entry with a half bath. And then kitchen, this will give them a mudroom to enter from the driveway. Their steps to come up from the driveway and garage into a tightly guarded mudroom with a half bath relocated laundry and then a sunroom. And then from the sunroom, progress into the kitchen. Above that, we're taking the opportunity of that addition, put in a new master bathroom. On the second floor, right now, there is a bathroom shared, complete two bedrooms with sort of most suite with doors on both sides. The existing bathroom, it serves one bedroom, and the new bathroom in the dorm over here will serve the other bedroom. So that is the extent of the project. There is an existing shed on the property behind those concrete slabs. We're proposing to move over here. Just a shed that can be picked up and moved. And that's pretty much it.
Jim?
The house has existing, we have original windows and the glass and the details of the windows. And we are repairing those as necessary. And we're going to get wooden storm windows to install over those windows for zergling, all the existing ones. There are two nonoriginal windows. We want to replace both of those. One is a smaller casement over the kitchen sink. We're proposing to put in a larger casement that will be more in proportion of the existing double hung windows, but acknowledging there's a counter underneath. And then upstairs is a very large, even larger than this casement right now, which I presume was put in for degress, but it goes almost to the floor. And it's kind of alarming with the prospect of grandparents visiting them. So we're going to shorten that and again, make it a closer proportion to the double hung windows, but again, keeping it as a case of degress. This is really the least visible side of the house. And again, we're doing what we can to make those windows be as harmonious with the original double hungs that are remaining in place as we can. The other exterior change is that there are no railings on the front porch right now. And again, as a concern for grandchildren and so forth, we're adding, these elements of the porch are existing, but we're adding, proposing to add guardrails and new handrails of the stair, in keeping with any of the other historic houses from the headline.
Do they have any historic photos of that house?
Yes, so the historic photo actually shows that entire area was closed in when the documentation was geared to the Landmark District in the 70s. You couldn't even enter. I mean, basically, it was screened in. And in fact, if they could do that, it would have been. Sorry about being excited. But yeah, you can see that they really, that's always been used really sort of as a side porch, because there is no walkway from the street. You know, steps, you just enter the lawn.
And they've not been closing the walkway?
They're trying to make it look like it's an entry, but really, nobody uses it. So there's some photos of the existing stone steps up from the driveway. And there are the existing exterior. You can see the two nonoriginal windows here, the one at the kitchen and the one in the bedroom. Again, we're proposing to make those more in proportion, more harmonious with the existing double hungs. And again, all original windows will be retained.
So Lauren answered one of my questions, which was, I couldn't figure out why the perspective to match the existing window sizes. And that's why I started changing those. So thank you for that. I clarified that question. Primarily, I think this is just an issue of historic preservation, consistency with property name and character. But I did just have two items. One is if there's any landscaping changes proposed, to make sure we have those on the plans. And also, does any exterior lighting, if anything, was proposed to?
Yeah, there's a side roof here, and that would be a recessed light up underneath, just shining down. That would be standard exterior lighting that's proposed.
That was it.
Planning board members? Questions, comments? Jim, I think you have a procedural resolution.
Jeff, procedural resolution for the board's consideration. For the application by Edwin and Mary Jo Henke for site plan and special use permit under Town Quitch, Chapter 125, Section 7265 and 69, for the overlay for construction of a sunroom and mudroom. The siding matches the house relocation of a shed, installation of new store windows, replacement of two nonhistoric windows, installation of a new metal roof, construction of exterior steps, and a flagstone walkway, as well as change in the interior layout of 11 Jones Street. Captured all. Is that right? Great. Except the application supporting documents is adequate for further review. Classifying actions type 2 under secret, which coordinated by a amount of quality review is not required. We'll schedule the public hearing for May 5th, 6:05. We'll send it to the C A B, the W A C, H A P A C, and Dutchess County Planning, and we need two planning board members to go site.
Go Edwin.
I'll go.
Is that correct?
Yes, I'm going to go. I still have game.
All right. May I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So go.
Motion second. Second, all those in favor? Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you. The next new application for us this evening is that of Barry Entner, 41 Meyer Road. The site plan is the reconstruction of an existing porch.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Cause, I'm the project manager for the Art of Building. I'm here on behalf of my client, Barry Michel Entner, this evening to petition for your approval of the removal and replacement in kind of the front porch in the south facing elevation of the primary residence. The reason for the application and for the work at all is that the existing porch doesn't have any floors. And as a result, there has been settlement and evidence of rot in numerous number of So what you see here illustrates why we're here this evening. You see the porch on the edge to the left. The house was built circa 1880, and the porch, as far as we know, is original to the structure. You'll see in pictures on the right that because of there being no footings supporting the posts, there's been settlement and water damage. The ledgers are not securely attached to the house. The framing materials pressure treated, indicating it may not be original to the house anyways. And then you can see the rot at the base of the posts and the trim, and also rot at the fascia and floorboards. I realize, I realize what we have here is not, this is what was submitted for the pre-application conference. I do have an updated presentation that was supposed to have been submitted at the same time. I have some printouts. I can hold up some images. Is that acceptable?
Have you submitted it to Gretchen?
I've sent it to Gretchen.
Gretchen, did you have it?
I sent it this evening.
Oh, you sent it this evening?
I do have some, I have some exhibits that I can hold up and show to you.
Well, sure. We'd like to get these things in advance, so Jim can remember them up so we have a chance to do them.
I understand. And we did actually have this done, and just the wrong thing was submitted. So I apologize for that.
I have 30 copies of the presentation that we prepared.
So the initial page that you're looking at just shows us the site plan, shows the other structures on the property. We click to the second page. That is the page that we just looked at, explaining why we're here tonight and identifying the problems that exist on the porch. The third page shows some overall views of the existing porch as it is today. This is, this is the illustration, for anyone who might not have it. So again, you see the house, and this is the porch in question. And we look at some overall views from the west and from the east. If you look to the next page. The next page digs in a little bit deeper, looks more closely at the details that are on the porch. My clients, the Enders, are incredibly proud of the historic character of.
Can we just look at page 1? She's on page 5.
So they have every, we have every intention of replicating these details as closely as possible. So looking at these details, I'll say first of all, that the porch roof is intended to remain in place. We don't intend to take that back or down. We plan to shore it up, unless we find some kind of, you know, poor conditions that require repair or replacement. The intention is to leave the roof as it is. You can see the brackets, and they are, will be either salvaged or replicated in kind. The four inch fine molding needs to be replicated exactly in kind. The six by six posts, the half inch base cap, and the seven by seven bases. The flooring is a three and a quarter inch tiling group of hobby, which we plan to replace. It's got an edge band up against the house. So the boards run perpendicular to the house with the exception of one edge band, which runs parallel to the facade. And then finally, at the bottom, we have a square lattice that is orthogonal. It's not on the diagonal. And the idea would be to match these details precisely as well. The last two pages pertain to some historic information about the property at the pre-application conference. Chair Moore requested that I go to speak with the town historian, who did have some interesting information. The first page is a 2020 evaluation by the Rhinebeck, it was a different name at the time, Historic and Archaeological Committee, outlining some of the historic information about the property. This was, of course, Violet Hill Road was the home of the violet farming industry in Rhinebeck and the farms that were there. That was the beginning, the beginning of the greenhouses, which eventually were all over town and gave rise to the name of the road, Violet Hill Road. Violet farming continued until almost 1980. And there have been a number of orders over the course of time, at least at that time, that has been since about 2000. And each time, they've done a number of improvements to the property, all of which have been brought before the board. So, and the other piece, so the final page does show, there was an inventory report done for the National Historic Register in 1980. I highlighted a few descriptions of where the mansions of the porch does come up, and it is significant to the historic nature and character of the property and the home. And we, of course, have the utmost respect for that and intend to replicate that. The only potential changes, and this is something that Jim brought up in the pre-conference, was that any departures from exact replacement in kind would be contemporary framing, contemporary footings, and code compliant steps to grade.
So this one, similar to the last one, I think is primarily initially with historic preservation. And I wrote this, how much of any porch may be original versus newer or replacement. And then obviously, consistency with property character. We did ask for demolition permit for this, because we are taking out parts of the structure as it relates to the way you are keeping it itself. But we do have that permit. And then, the way that I read the way the law works, unfortunately, because we are putting flutters in and disturbing the ground, so wetland nearby, they're going to have to submit for jurisdictional determination, even though we're only talking about flutters. The way the D E C code works with the wetlands, if there's any disturbance, you have to go and look to the wetlands because of these new rules. We're still trying to figure out, I think we do need to have it submitted to the J D. So have you submitted the J D application?
Yes. We did it immediately after the comments.
So that could take up to 90 days, possibly more, if D E C comes back and says they want more time. That's what I got.
Planning board members?
Are you placing all the floorboards? The floorboards?
The floorboards?
Yeah, the back especially.
Yes, yes.
Doesn't look in terrible condition.
We could, you know, the worst of the rot is on the east side of the porch. We could try to salvage as much of that material as possible and install it. Don't believe that it is original to the house. But our intention is to use that as our cue and to replace it so that it matches that appearance as best as possible.
Anyone else?
The pictures that you show, show some pressure treated dimensional lumber that's underneath the togha, which, you know, it's exotic, probably wouldn't date to 1900. Do you have any indication of, I mean, is there anything in there as far as old marks from former framing, mortise pockets, anything that might indicate of what was there originally that might be in danger of being lost by the reconstruction of the porch?
That's a great question, and we'd know better once the porch has been removed, but we can try to pull off some of the lattice and climb under it and take a closer look.
Do you have any kind of program documentation to find something you photographed, and it goes into some sort of a as a built drawing or a report that kind of stays with the house?
We can do that, certainly.
I'm remembering correctly, I believe at the pre-con, suggested that you might want to do a sort of survey of all of the elevations of the building to see if there were other areas of the building that needed work, so that if that were the case, we could bring it all in at the same time under one application. Were you able to accomplish that?
I spoke with the client, and they were satisfied with the work that's been with the state of the house as it is, and said they wanted to include it in our application.
So we won't see you, again, so for some other repairs that would?
I did try to emphasize this point, and they asked that the application just be done this.
Well, we tried. Okay. Anyone else?
I just have a question for Jim. I'm thinking, this is outside the wetland buffers, I remember looking at the site plan. It just seems so bizarre that we might have to wait 90 days for some footings that are outside the buffer. I mean, is this clearly what the D E C requires?
I think, I can't speak for Jim, but I've had several conversations the last few days, I see people in the audience shaking their heads. I think the problem is we don't clearly know what T E C wants. Jim, would you take that?
No, I think that's true. I mean, D E C still says that there, you know, there are wetland buffers within 100 feet of the wetland itself. But if you read the way that the new regulations came about January 1st, it talked about anything within 800 feet of the wetland, which this is. And if you look at the wetland law, it's anything that's a disturbance within that 100-foot buffer. So if you take the 100-foot buffer and anything that's a disturbance, but then you take the new law that says they won't look at anything within 800 feet, it says to me that any disturbance within 800 feet, they want to see.
But they don't say that. It's a disturbance within 800 feet.
It's not that clear to me in the way the law is written. I'm not 100% clear. We're still going through figuring out exactly what it means. But I would hate on the back end to go through all this and then find that everything that has been done has to go back to and start over again, because we don't have a necessary D E C premise. That's what we don't want to do. So I am erring a bit on side caution to make sure that we aren't creating any issues in the future with the wetlands. Because we don't actually have the wetlands mapping. The state hasn't provided us any mapping of the wetlands or the general pools. So we only have some guidance of what was done when they mapped it through area mapping back in, I think, the 80s. And that's just some guidance documents. There is clearly a wetland on the property within 800 feet. So right now, for now, unless and until I've, you know, been told otherwise, no one has it, we'll be including applicants in the coming over the last three months. It's within 800 feet or submitting, or asking, requesting jurisdictional termination.
Is there any process for getting back to the D E C at some time in the future when a list of questions or examples could be given to them that, you know, cases where people are being held up really unnecessarily?
Probably. I don't know if you can answer that.
But we could do that, right? As a board, I mean, we could collect some examples of things that are coming up and ask for clarification from the D E C.
You can certainly tell me when you want.
I would move that we do that. Do I have a second?
Shall we take it all? Oh, yes. We have a motion in this law field.
Is there anybody within the D E C structure who's like the district representative, like who would be responsible for issuing the fine on this, if the applicants were in violation?
I don't know the full process. My understanding is there is a regional person who, or who gets these. But I did sit in on the D E C webinar, where I heard that I believe they hired two people to review all the applications that are submitted. I can only imagine right now, they're reviewing thousands of applications across the state of New York. Because this affects everything within 800 feet of the wetland in the state of New York. So my guess would be they're probably pretty overwhelmed right now with applications that have gone in. But I just don't have the answer. I haven't said enough, I think, since the webinar, a month and a half ago.
In one of the pre-cons this morning, the applicant's representative indicated that within, since this occurred, they have over a dozen letters submitted to D E C, and they've gotten no responses on any of them. So I think, you know, I'm not opposed to doing what you're suggesting. I just think the issue is, it can't do any harm, but the issue is much larger than Rhinebeck. And I don't, you know, there's no harm in doing what you're proposing, but it's the Timothy Iceberg, I think, is.
On the other hand, if, like, you know, various governmental bodies, even New York, ask for clarification, we would be one of many. If they had clarification, they wouldn't be bombarded with, you know, useless, unnecessary applications. Anyway, I think we were in the middle of a vote to send something to the D E C.
Sure. And I believe that, I believe that the members of the planning board were, may I have a motion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That being said, we have a procedural resolution, and we are not delaying moving this application forward, because one indicated they have already submitted a letter, which is what we've been asking applicants to do. And we're accepting the submission of the letter as evidence that they want to move forward, and we are going forward with them. So we did not make the decision to wait until they get the determination. We made the decision to process it once we know that they've made the efficient submission. So Jim, with that, would you like to perhaps alter the procedural resolution?
So for the board's consideration tonight, a procedural resolution for the application by Barry Entner for site plan approval under Town Quitch, Chapter 125, for reconstruction of a porch recording with Violet Hill Road, within the RC 5. Accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for the review. Classifying the action is type 2 under secret, for which coordinated by a amount of quality review is not required. We will schedule the hearing for May 5th at 6:05. Soon thereafter, we will send this to the C A B, H A P A C, and Dutchess County Planning, and we need two planning board members to go site.
Would you like to go? I'll go. Sharon and Edna. Man of motion to accept the draft procedural resolution? So go. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion for that. Thank you very much, Sharon. The third new application for this evening is that of Robert Turnlow, 33 Grinnell Street, site plan and special use permit for the improvements now in, for improvements and existing nonconforming structures.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Ron Toro. I'm the homeowner at 33 Grinnell Street in Roinkwood. And yeah, this is application for site plan and special use permit approval for several property improvements. Notably, we have a greenhouse just here, an existing greenhouse that's been there for a few years, but we're bringing some things under this single application. 200 square foot greenhouse. We would like to put a sauna next to that, and a hot tub where you can sit. There's actually a page that shows sort of the plan. There we go. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this is better. So existing greenhouse, we'd like to put a sauna next to that. A hot tub which would be sunken into the ground with eighteen inches of it exposed, so most of it underground. And an electric vehicle charging station at the driveway. And so our main goal, along with improvements of the property, is keeping everything harmonious. This is the carpenter graphic on the historic registers, so we're very keen to preserve the character of the house and the neighborhood. And so landscaping surrounding the property will screen everything, including, we have a four hundred amp service upgrade. That's a really notable, um, improvement. So we currently are experiencing, um, dimming of lights, you know, with the, the drain on the tower that we have right now. We have a pool across the street. Everything coming from one panel. I've had three electricians tell me we need to upgrade. Actually, what that will do on this top part of the house here, we have a pretty ugly service box and there's a large line running to that, which will be replacing the board and batten. And we'll be nestling into the trees on the, the top edge there of the property, a four hundred amp, uh, service unit. A, a box, basically, right in there. That's right. So this will actually be an improvement to the structure itself and we'll have evergreens surrounded. We already have pretty significant, uh, border evergreens and in this landscape plan, everything that's being, that's part of this addition will be screened by, uh, evergreen bushes, trees, and native plantings. I think that's pretty much it. There's an existing shed you can see down there. Uh, it's a point seven five acre property, so this is a fairly small footprint, given the size of the land itself. And we hope that with the landscaping, it will be well-integrated, screened from the road, and that's about it.
All right, Jim?
Took a look at a couple, mostly technical questions, but as noted, this is of course our property. We did ask for phase one, N one B to be drafted, and that was W H C S and found most significant materials and what was looked at. I did have a question though. Did they look at where you're going to, or you, you already ran the underground lines, right? Going into the house?
No, so the underground lines, they were running across the top of the property toward the pole. So it'll be underground rather than that existing overhead service line. The only other line would be between the house and the spot. There would be, there would be a line running underground there. She dug all around. She did probably ten different, uh, dig sites all around where the work was planned. So nothing was found. She said it was clay soil, uh, no chance of significant findings in that area, as her determination.
So I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. The first one, uh, you noted in the application that the treehouse, which is already there, was for temporary use with the sunset provision for June first, twenty twenty-eight. I assume that means you're going to keep it for a couple of years and then you plan to tear it down. Is that the case? Just explain that a little bit.
Yeah, so thank you for that. I'm so glad you brought that up. So we're actually going to move it to immediately removing that. So I talked to Brian Tam and he gave a determination this week that we need a whole other variance for being in front of the house on the Grinnell Street side with the treehouse. My kids are seventeen and fourteen. They've kind of aged out of it and we're just going to remove it rather than go through the whole process. So that's going to be stricken from the, the application.
The variance goes away.
That's correct. Yes.
Another set of plans. We do have a proposed E V charger. Um, I think this is it right here, right at the end of the driveway. I didn't see any details on it. I'm guessing it's not there yet. Typically, when we have an E V charger on such a stick, um, in historic district, like just kind of what we're looking at doing. So do you have any thoughts on what, what's it going to be? Is it going to just be on a four by four post? Is it behind the existing wall? What, um, what kind is going on? Because if there aren't cars there, you know, it's just going to kind of just be in the driveway.
Of course. Yeah, I'm interested in having it be as low profile as possible. So there are evergreens, uh, all along the, the wall. There's a, there's a stone wall and then evergreens blocking the driveway from, from the yard. So you can't see into the driveway. It's possible that we put the charging on the inside. It's also possible that we put some plantings around it. I haven't actually picked out a unit or, you know, figured out what's going on with it, but I'd love it to be as, you know, invisible as possible. So.
Would you talk to us if you picked out anything and you added those details to the application?
Sure thing. Yes, I'll do that. Thank you.
The last ones are a bit more technical. Um, there wasn't a scale bar on the plans, so, um, I'm not able to actually scale anything out when I look at them. Um, so that, that was one item. But the bigger one, um, is that she planned, your plans L one hundred, then you can do these, your consultant did. But L one hundred and two, two hundred actually don't match. If you look at these, I flipped, threw them really quickly. I can't put here, but your, your hot tub here is kind of lined up in front of the shed. If you go over here, your hot tub is offset from the shed.
So lined up with the shed version is correct. Yeah, so I'll make sure she updates that.
Yeah, either updated or pull one of them. They have to be consistent so that when these get to the building department, they know what they're looking at. So just make sure all your details, you know, all line up so that it's in the right place. Typically, we like to see some distances here, so there's some measurements that the, um, the building department can work off of.
Yeah.
To know where these are supposed to be. But obviously, with the new existing shed, that, that helps. But, yeah, that, that needs to be consistent or she, one of the other.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's going to be the one lined up, which I guess she just didn't update the color.
And then the other one, again, it's, it's a minor thing, but sometimes it's still become minor things. It was like a ghost of such a two generators and two posts on one of these sheets. And I just want to make sure we're only talking about one. That was on this one. Not the existing conditions, actually. So it may not, like I said, I think it was just a ghosted sheet on here, but, um, we have one on here twice.
Oh, interesting. Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify, since this is the existing conditions, you don't have two of each, right? We just have the one.
No, that's correct. Sorry. Okay. I don't know why there's a double on there, but, um, that's a mistake. So it should just be, there's an existing generator which is permitted in that spot and the, um, four hundred amp service unit would be, you know, as far as the, there are a whole bunch of them with just one. That's the correct distance and configuration.
So it's an area exists today?
The generator exists. The four hundred amp, uh, unit is, is actually there, closer to the road. It's going to come back farther. It's not live or, yeah, it's just.
It's going to be what's shown here.
Correct. That's right. That's the exact one.
Yeah, there was some, just some clarifications.
By the coordinators? Questions?
Uh, yes. Uh, did, did plans show where the second tank and the reach field are?
You know, it's a really good question. Um, it doesn't look like they do, but they're not impacted by this. I can, I can point out where they are. Um, I mean, the tank is up in here and reach field is out, uh, in this area. So that's not going to be impacted by the digging, but we can mark those on the plan if that's helpful.
Yeah, well, there are offsets that you have to, you know, you have to stay X amount of feet to put it on what the code is.
Okay, yeah.
And after show, like you've got the proper separation. Also, the, um, whatever species of charger you have to light up.
Yeah, I mean.
Because some of them glow a little bit and that would be the only thing, like, definitely want to put something in front of it if it lights up when you plug in or when it's done, it turns green.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great point. I would like it to be as low profile in every way as possible. So I'll find out which is the least obvious, least visible solution and we'll screen it. In any case, it will be hidden as best we can. So I'll, I'll make sure that's marked.
Anyone else? Draft procedural resolution?
A draft procedural resolution for the board's consideration tonight for the application by Robert Turnlow for site plan special use permit under town code chapter one, two, five, uh, for review and approval of an existing greenhouse. We'll take the treehouse off. Shed and insulation, electrical service upgrades, thaw and, is it barrel sauna too, right?
The sauna, yes. It's next to the greenhouse. Yeah.
Heat pump, E V charging station, the walkways connecting elements of thirty-three Grinnell Street. Accepting the application supporting documents as adequate for the review. Classifying the actions type two hundred seeker, for which coordinated by amount of quality review is not required. Schedule the public hearing for May fifth at six oh five. We will send this to the C A B, the W A C, H A P A C, County Planning, and need two planning board members to go second.
I'll go. A manual motion to accept the draft procedural resolution. Motion second, subject. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand your motion. Motion against.
Thank you.
We would like to review this at both sides. On the last, uh, application. So two, that can be as short as the one twenty-four. Is that a T court LLC, K P H two LLC, one ninety-five Ruben Row, and one eighty-nine Ruben Row? Site plan, special use permit, wetland department, board of train, fence, gates, stone wall. Seth, good evening?
Good evening. Seth Stippel with Mark Kaminsky, E D L S P C. Here this evening, joined by, uh, members of the project team. Dan Prover from Prover and O'Leary, a structural engineer, as well as Frank Massarello, the architect. Here this evening to discuss a unique and interesting project with you. Just like to, uh, speak briefly about the site. Um, there are two sites this evening representing T Court LLC and K P H two management LLC. Other are common ownership, however, they are separate entities. The, uh, T Court parcel, which is located here, is fifty-five acres. And the K P H two, um, parcel is fifty acres and that's located here. They share a common drive access here and T Court has another point of access here. The project, as Melanie mentioned, is for a one-eighth scale, uh, trains north and east loops. And that includes a garden train and two buildings, a conservatory and a platform, those are roof structures. On lot one and two, we will also be, um, discussing moving some fencing, some managed gates, some pillars and some stone wall. So that's a brief outline. Next slide, please. So just wanted to, uh, I know that some of the members of this board had been, uh, and are familiar with this project from the past. And as recently as twenty twenty-three, we did commit for amendments, so there may be even more members. But because there is some context and history about the approval process here, we just want to run through that briefly. Uh, the project was previously reviewed by both the planning and zoning board appeals. For the planning board, they actually did a, uh, deep dive into a master plan across all of the three properties. Uh, that master plan started in twenty eighteen, was reviewed in twenty twenty-two and approved in twenty twenty-two. There were some amendments, some changes and, uh, some iterations that happened along the way based on input from this board. But what that did include is included a cultural landscape report, which actually did an analysis of the two thousand acres that were part of the original Aster. They developed a period of significance for the, uh, the properties themselves and, uh, pointed out significant, um, input to the project team on, you know, how and where things should be positioned. So a lot of that work was done and, and included as part of that was the conceptual sighting of the full concept of the train and, uh, as well as, you know, some discussion of, of various other elements. During that process, uh, the planning board did go through a master plan seeker determination, as well as conducted, um, we did conduct archaeology across the entire site at any place that there was disturbance. So just to look at a couple of photos regarding that, uh, this is actually kind of outlining the entire two thousand acres that was analyzed during the cultural landscape report. Our current parcels that we're discussing are right in this area here. There is some historical context for having a miniature ride-on train on the property. Aster had, uh, located over almost about three quarters of a mile to a mile of that throughout the entire property, going from, uh, the tennis court is what they call it, uh, up into S S S Farm, which is the property to the north of the T Court site. Uh, so these are just some images of the historic Aster train, which did have trestles and other elements. The, uh, previous master plan shows the outline of, uh, the entire train, uh, as it was approved during the master plan phase. This is just an illustration of the archaeology that was done in those areas. There was a, let's, some minor changes. What we had done is done a phased development approach for the train. Currently, we were just developing phase one and phase two, which are the central and the southern loops, and those include buildings. All of those were, um, required to go through a site plan process as we are today and approved by this board. So that includes what is the, uh, central loop that's here and the southern loop, which is located here, and then, uh, the buildings that are located in this area. Those are, uh, the roundhouse and car barn and the associated train station. Just noting here in the middle, uh, we did also have approval for some movement of the gates, which we'll be discussing towards the end. Uh, just want, wanted to note that that was previously discussed with the board. Also included in that approval was an area variance by the Z P A. Because of the location of the buildings and the nature of the T Court parcel, any accessory structure is going to be in front of the principal dwelling, so it requires several variances. Um, so those were previously, next slide, please. So the current proposal, uh, we're in front of this board for a site plan special use permit and wetland permit. As I said, the master plan required all next steps and phases of development to go through individual site plan processes, which brings us here. Based on our development, we are, um, impacting some wetland buffer area. Those wetlands are currently contaminated as A C O A town wetlands. We have, uh, formally, uh, submitted the jurisdictional determination of the E C to move forward with that process. But section one twenty will be, uh, one of the, uh, things that we're speaking with you and asking about. Section one twenty-five thirty-seven is accessory structures. Uh, we do have the two new accessory structures because of the location and the number of those structures. This board actually has an action through special use permit to allow us the sighting of those buildings and, uh, a number greater than three, which is allowed by code. So one twenty-five thirty-eight, defenses, walls and gates, as I mentioned, we're going to be discussing a little bit about that. Also, development near strings and rivers and wetlands, that's some of the, um, overlay districts, as well as our proximity to the Hudson River. And then also major excavation and tree, uh, portions of this. There may be some more, Jim. I'm not sure if you put those, but this is basically our outline of the permitting that we'll require at this point. We are in front of the Z P A. We, we did that last month. And, uh, they are, uh, moving our application to the next phase, which is a public hearing. As I mentioned, we need five variants for them. One would be, uh, the north loops trestle height, uh, the east loop signature bridge height. The zoning districts I mentioned for accessory structures, there are aggregate square footage. And then the location of the covered platform and the conservatory are in front of the principal dwelling. So those are the various, next slide, please. Um, so the north loop, uh, which is, you know, I said, central and southern loops, uh, this is the, uh, central loop located here. The north loop is proposed, uh, to be located within a thirty-foot deed of easement, portions of which, which are, uh, this property, T Court LLC, and portions of which are in S S S Farms. The deed is actually published at the county fireworks office. Uh, it can be readily available. And I believe we provided a copy of it with our submission. Um, so the total length of the, what is the phase three loop, which is here, is a connection between what is the central loop and the southern loop. This, uh, portion is actually, um, fourteen hundred meter feet of total track. However, only seven hundred and fifty, uh, feet of that are at-grade track. Um, I'm going to be discussing the at-grade track and, uh, later, uh, DeBrock will be discussing the trestles and, uh, other elements that are involved in this. So the portions of at-grade track are actually right here. This is an abutment. And then this is at-grade track which connects back into the, uh, central loop. And then there's a small portion of at-grade track before a connection is made to what is a stone arch bridge, uh, in the future. Similarly, on the south end, this is the at-grade track section. You have just, uh, loop connections so that the functionality of the train will allow you to go in multi-directions. So we really only have seven hundred and fifty, uh, feet of at-grade track. It's a four-foot wide track, uh, with, uh, a formation bed, a ballast cushion, sleeper and rails. That looks very similar to what we see here. This has actually been constructed in the field. This is a portion of what is our, um, our central loop right here. So this is what it ends up looking like in the field. Also, as part of that, um, you know, uh, we will have some stone abutments and some pre-cast piers. I just want to discuss kind of how those go in. During, uh, the process of constructing, uh, phase one and two, we noted that using pre-cast piers was a good solution. It allows for an open excavation between the two, placement of pre-cast concrete piers on some foundation bedding and then back though with native material. Quick, easy and tended to go pretty quickly. And then you have abutments that are all stacked stone as well, um, and those are all portions. So that would be like the terminus here is what it would look like. And then you pick up starting with these on the ground. So able to minimize disturbance with utilizing those products. The, uh, larger spans, uh, anything that has, uh, needs a foundation or a footing, let's see in this bottom picture, this is where we do like poured foundation and footing for, um, for those larger sections and structures. Again, you know, pretty quick excavation, uh, you know, you put the concrete in the ground and then, uh, you back go with the material. In the track bed here is communication and electric. The track bed itself is only about eight inches of material, um, but just below that and a little bit of a bench is, uh, electrical and communication that circulate around the entire, um, um, train loops. That's, uh, so that, um, any of the switches and various elements can be activated. So, uh, for motion and sensor controls. So for erosion sediment controls, back in this back corner, you'll notice that there's some silt sock. We found silt socks, it'd be a very effective method, we'll also be using silt fence, and then immediately seed and emulsing after we've made, installed things and pulled back from the disparate areas. That just allows for a clean kind of project to move as you go and stabilize as you go. Weapon disturbance for this project, this is a seasonal intermittent creek that has been identified as a town or ACOE wetland. It is a very defined drainage quarter, only a few feet wide. And then that has buffer areas underfoot associated with it. So the disturbance area will be right in this area, and it is just buffer disturbance. We know that that's mostly trestles, so it would be configurations like this, the impact would be minimal to the ground. But we do take credit for the entire lift, through the entire buffer, that's what we're reporting to you as our weapon disturbance. But it should be a little bit less than that. So, next slide, please. This is the east loop. This loop connects to both the central and southern loop again. Here's the train yard, this is the roundhouse here. And so you leave the train yard, and now you're heading out to the east, across a ravine, to the east loop. The total track length here is 2,133 feet, with about half of that, or a little more, of at-grade track. Your at-grade track sections again are right here, where it connects to the other loops. And then here is an abutment, this starts a trestle bridge, which Dan will speak about. And then we pick up at-grade track here, and carry it around to where this abutment is here. There's a unique case here where there's a signature element, and then it comes to a platform. So this is actually a trestle, all of this is low trestle here. Minimizes impact, and also just allows us to maintain grade, the grades are very low tolerant here. It's 1.6% is the maximum grade that a train can actually accommodate. So again, same type of construction, as I mentioned, you know, same type of bridges and abutments. There's a couple of other elements Dan will speak about with this area. What this does include, same thing with electrical, same thing with the erosion control. We can have a little buffer disturbance. Obviously, this is a, similarly, a more defined drainage quarter, bringing water from SSS Farms. Down through, it passes by Franklin Nursing Home, where they discharge their sand fair disposal into the stream. And then there's a little bit of wetland that's associated with this and the buffer area. Our impacts are to either side of that, and we do quantify the entire area, as well as the footings that are required and foundations for what is the signature bridge. The, this portion of the project does include what is a garden scale train and garden, and two buildings, a platform, which will be a arrival destination for the ride-on train, and a conservatory, which is in support of the garden scale, keeping all of the trains there. Those will be discussed later. So next slide, please. So just going to move on and allow Dan to just speak about just those two elements we talked about, the Phase Three loop and the Phase Four loop, and their structural components.
Hi, Board. Dan Prober, P&amp;O Engineering, the structural engineer for the project. I'm going to go over the two various structural elements that are commended. The first one Seth brought up is the north loop, right? So this is 1,400, I think, is that right Seth? Was the overall, was the loop? And 700 is composed of a trestle. If you can go to the next slide. So this is broken down, I don't know if anybody's been out to the existing site, having its appeal. This is very similar to the existing trestles that are already in the structural on-site. The first part will be composed of wood vents, ten-foot on center with the decks sitting on top, as well as the back end. This one's about 350, this one's about 200. The exciting part of this one is the center section here. This will have a steel arch structure to it that will have spans of about 40 feet. The high point, which will be above the stream or squail that exists in the area, is about 32 feet in height. Go to the next slide. This kind of gives you, this is a picture of the wood vents that are installed. Again, that would be the first, the front and the back section of the north loop. Just pressure-treated lumber with a steel support system above. And it's kind of, you can see the railing that it goes on there with X-bracing. And the weathered steel approach on top, sits on precast concrete footings. The next slide is some reference size ideas of what the central 40-foot span trestles are. So these are arch truss with a top deck system, weathered steel approach, and everything's kind of rusted color. So that's what we're going to have, and that center section, that's about 120 feet. Go to the next slide. There is that section there. We do cross above the existing, one of the existing tracks, and we'll have about a clearance of about seven to, seven to six to seven feet total, which is more than sufficient, because you're sitting down kind of standing up. Again, this is the tallest part, right here, which is about 32 feet. So that's gives you a little idea of the north loop. The next loop, or the next slide, is the signature bridge. And it's based, initially was based on the Hellscape design, which is a arched, true arch design with a low-string truss system. This is the Hellscape itself. This is probably one of the first through-arch type constructions that was going on, but then they replicated it in numerous conditions. One is the Sydney Bridge. The other one is the Bayonne Bridge into Staten Island. And another one here is the American Bedroom Bridge along the iconic Parkway that goes over the crook. So that gives you the idea of what we're trying to mimic in the style. It's not, by any means an exact replica, a lot smaller, you can notice. But the towers are a combination of all of the ones that we're talking about. Next slide. This is an elevation view of the bridge. It's 150 feet in span, and at the high point, it's, the high point's 51 feet above the base at the center. So that's from here to there. This is like a lower beam, that the, the, the Prober, you can kind of see it starts over here, I'm sure they extended it up. This is the low part of the beam that we're crossing. And the idea is to do a larger span bridge, and that this is where the wetland is in that area. The structure itself will be weathered steel, and with truss lattice. The deck will be core, or metal brading, which has been used on other areas of the site. It will have two tracks instead of one on it. The towers on either side will be steel structures with stone clad. It'll be the same stone cladding that they're using everywhere else on the site, predominantly right now in the arch bridges, or under construction for Phase Two. And the next slide gives you, so these are blowups of the towers themselves. It also gives you a little bit of proportionality of where, how high, taller, really. This one's 35 feet, this one is roughly around 24 and 25. The approaches to either side of this will be steel vents, similar to the wood, but constructed steel, ten-foot on center, similar to what's already on-site in Phase One and Two. So that gives you a rough overview of the structures on the north and east loops. Turn it over to him.
So we're going to walk you through, essentially, Dan's taken us across the signature bridge now, and we're on a portion of the site that is going to have the garden scale, garden and railway. Just wanted to note, maybe even Jim, if you could just zoom in to the bottom left-hand corner quick. This entire site, this whole area here, was formerly a developer. It was purchased and added to the property later by a previous owner, the owner of T-Corp. It had a, similar to the brutalist building that is Franklin now, it had a similar multi-story brick building that had this arrangement throughout the entire site. You can see that it had multiple driveways and a large building in this area. This is, I can't actually read the bayonets, but I think that's 2004, right? So in 2000, no, 2014, excuse me, 2014, the entire area was raised. So not only was the building demolished, but you can see the extent of the disturbance that was created and caused in this entire area. We, since that time, since it was completely raised, we did have archaeology done in this area, because we did plan a loop. The loop was a little bit different, it was a little bit more of a lollipop in this area. Now that we've added the garden scale train to it, it's a rounder space with the garden train a little. You can see that pretty much within the entire lens of the disturbance that was previously caused in the site. We can zoom back, back up, that'd be great. So the garden scale train is the brainchild of Jack Rupich, who was a renowned garden scale designer. As I mentioned, this is a previously disturbed area. The perimeter of the garden train, which is here, this is the outside of the garden train area, is about 940 meter feet. There will be some tracks and trains that run around the entire perimeter, as well as some interior tracks and train yards that are part of the concept. The total disturbance for this area of the G scale is about 0.7 acres. The combination of all disturbances for all phases, three, four, and the G scale is about two and a half acres. So using the techniques that we are, we're kind of minimizing disturbance as great as possible. This area will be filled, so there is a perimeter wall proposed. That wall goes from here and around to catch grade here. That is only about two feet, and it does vary in height based on existing topography. That will allow us to fill in the area in the center to create what you see over here, which is some hills and nails and topography and relief at certain areas, so that it helps separate various elements of the design from other elements of the design. That max height in that area of fill, we may have four feet, five feet of fill. So this area is also because of its proximity to the signature bridge, we're proposing to also utilize this area as staging for construction. The reason we would do that is because we need to fill this area anyway, and what we would do is just put down some stone and allow for construction at some 150-foot span, so that that could be swung over place, so that we can minimize the disturbance also. So just a temporary note. The remainder of the garden scale train will be burn or at-grade track. And there are several finishes and features within the garden scale. There are sculptures, building sculptures mainly, there are major plantings, water features, there are train yards and train tracks. As I mentioned, there are two buildings, or a building is associated with the garden scale, that's mainly the conservatory. Conservatory is strictly for display and storage and maintenance of the garden scale trains. Already in ownership is over 200 of these garden scale trains, so space to store them is actually necessary. So what would happen is the garden scale trains will run, they can do this automatically, they can do it driven from this building, and then they will return to this building and to be stored. So that's the general kind of concept with the building. For drainage, we do have some topography here, which drains to a low point. So we'll be providing just the catch basin to make sure that we have positive drainage for the most part, but that's where it runs off, either to the east or the west, or north and south. We will be using that drainage for somewhat temporary use, if necessary, for maintenance of the water features. Water features will be in the base of Manhattan, you know, and then also in the Chicago area, and also at the Niagara Falls area. Water features are intended to be two to three inches maximum. They'll actually be painted to create this illusion of depth, and are really just there for reflective purposes and a little bit of like wave action. So they are not deep or, you know, considered to be kind of anything other than a water feature. That's part of this garden scale. You know, again, using the same kind of erosion sediment control measures here, and this area is actually relatively flat, so we don't have too many issues with that kind of slope. And as I mentioned, this won't be a construction stage. So next slide, please. So this is just an idea, and this all comes in, you all have a packet of this information from Jack Rupich, of his concept, which is New York to Chicago of a certain time period, and I believe it's from the 40s up to, or mid-30s. Mid-30s. And so you are, you know, here is kind of an outline, it lists the building numbers, and you can take a look at that. Here is a kind of a scale of what some of the buildings will be looking like. And then these are the skyline of New York that they're replicating. As we go up, we're going through Austin, we're going through Harmon, we're doing the water path. So a portion of this area here, you'll start to see the Hudson River up here, which drains down to New York. And you'll be doing, you know, along the river passage, we do have the Bear Mountain area, West Point, looking at Hyde Park, Ryan Cliff, up into Astor, some elements there, as well as the Albany State House and the station. We will be doing some of the Buffalo Station, Niagara Falls, as I mentioned, and then terminus in Chicago. And so New York City starts here, and if you were to take that around, this would be the pathway, you know, for, in the year Chicago, for all of those design elements. Next slide, please. And here are just some examples of both the buildings that we are using, and to try to give you an idea of scale here. And the plantings, all plantings are miniaturized, essentially bonsai, if you will, and trimmed and maintained to be that. These are actually potted plants that go into these site features, as well as small buildings. These are just examples of the detail of where everything is hand-painted. And it will be designed to hold up to the elements to the best extent possible. And so this is just an idea of all of the native plantings that we're proposing. We are partnering with local nurseries to source those plant materials, as well as do the installation, and some of the water feature. I'm just going to hand off to Frank Mazzarella to discuss a little bit more of the context of the history of garden scales and paint to Astor, and then also just the buildings and stuff.
Thank you, Frank Mazzarella, architect, I'm assisting with Jack Rupich and the Astor team with some of the actual structures and some of the garden scale layout as well. This first slide just is referencing some of the historic gardens that were built over time on the Astor state, especially Vincent Astor's wife, Helen, who was very involved with gardening, also in the community. And starting from the 1960s, from 1960 onto the 1920s, had especially Italianate gardens on the property. This is Helen in one of her gardens, and again, you're seeing the reflective pools, which somewhat are going, some of them are going to appear in our proposal as well. She worked at Charles Platt on some of her designs. This is the watercolor, one of the reflecting pools, an Italianate garden. And the photo on the right references an Italianate garden, which was built below the casino in the lower portion of the landscape there, below the casino. You start to see there's some high sculptural elements also appear in the form appropriate. Next slide, please. This is an area with view of Jack's layout. We're seeing the drive which meets down from River Road on the left side, which is the south side of the site. The signature bridge in the upper right, which Dan and Seth mentioned. The area of trestle from the larger train loop, which runs kind of concentric to the smaller G scale, garden scale layout in the center. You're seeing the Manhattan area with a reflecting pool, Chicago across the way, on the north side of the layout. You have Lake Michigan, Niagara Falls, and also a storage building, which we tried to locate in the area, where there happened to be an opening, almost an alley of trees there. Trying to remove as few trees as possible. So it seems like a good location where the people who are operating the trains or any visitors would be able to view the entire layout from that vantage point. At the top is the train canopy, the larger train, the neutral train platform and canopy, where people are able to disembark and then take a little footpath, stepping stones, in the case, if they want to visit this train storage building. So landscape is, you know, the garden is a big part of this project, and Jack is very, you know, very talented in treating the montebriary and clipping the roofself. So it's interesting to see him work. Next slide, please. This is a view, if you were coming down from River Road, the land, as you come down, the hill begins to open on the right. You're seeing the view of Manhattan and its reflecting pool. You're seeing the view of Manhattan and its reflecting pool and nature train platform, which encircles the smaller garden scale layout. And you're starting to see through the chase the storage building, the conservatory building. Next slide, please. This is a view now from the northern portion of the site, where you're seeing the Signature Bridge, the Chicago area with the Lake Michigan, and again, the train storage conservatory building on the left. Next slide, please. This overall plan just shows what we just saw in the area here. On the left side, you can see train line on Kennedy for the nature train. And here, further down south, is the conservatory slash train storage building. Next slide, please. So the train platform canopy is based on the Raincliff Train Station. It's a very interesting structure. It has an inverted roof. It's a timber frame structure. Has a central beam and other beams, which splay out and upward. So the order is directed inward. It has a series of downspouts at the center. So we're almost exactly replicating this structural system, materials, including some of the colors here in our train platform building. Next slide, please. Train platform canopy. This is an elevation, an altitude elevation. It reaches a height, a maximum height of about 11 feet at its peak and has slopes downward from there. 10-foot spacing of deeper supports. A little base detail already replicating that up on the Raincliff platform. Downspouts at two locations. About 45 feet long and 12 foot six wide for the actual platform itself. Next slide, please. This is the roof plan. You're showing now the roof has a slight overhang, slightly wider, slightly longer, protecting that area, just keeping the rain off. There's just a very slight step down, one step about six inches from the platform to grade. And here you're seeing where the actual train tracks run through, two sets of tracks. Next slide, please. So this is a view from where the tressel meets the actual platform base itself. We're seeing a, it was a version of the train platform. What we now have is a little bit more of an overhang on each side as well, but the design is almost identical to what you're seeing here. You're also seeing, Seth mentioned, the low walls, which help retain some of the topo that's going to be filled on the interior of the garden scale layout. Those walls are all going to be made of stone. So what you're going to be seeing from the outside is actual stone. You see the work that they're doing. That is actually solid, you know, it's four inches thick. If there is any need for a foundation wall or tamed wall, it will be buried below that. So what you're seeing is when there's a wall, a stone finish. And in this area is a tressel where they have a miniature tressel for the garden scale, which kind of swings, swings around in between the trees. And the trains are actually lodged in this building. They're able to be moved in. And you're also seeing here some of the buildings along, there's Harmon and then there are further, further north as we move along towards the left. Next slide, please. This, these are historical images, which references some of the many greenhouses which were built on the Astor state, starting way back with William Backhouse Astor and then Jack Astor. And there's an actual greenhouse, which was built almost like the miniature Crystal Palace, version of John Paxton's Crystal Palace in London, very long structure. And it has a transept with a kind of gable roof, creating an entry. The blueprint on the bottom is a 1922 blueprint of a greenhouse, which was built in 1924. It's the actual one, the only one that continues to exist on the property. And some of the other buildings, this one is a Violet House. So there was a conservatory. There was a Violet House. There are other greenhouses in the back. There's sheds, there's a water tower. There was another orange structure here and a gardener's house and some other sheds as well. This, I'm sorry, River Road runs along the bottom here. And this is a large, what we now call dayhouse. Next slide, please. This is a floor plan showing the conservatory slash train storage building. These lines on the bottom of the sheet represent where the trains, the garden scale trains actually pull in. It's approximately 40 foot by 40 foot square. The corners cut off to create an entry with a kind of replicating the transept we mentioned earlier. Approximately 1,500 square feet. A mini spiral stair for just a little observation platform above this very open space. It's a steel structure, galvanized and then painted and glass on the exterior. And there's a brick foundation wall, which runs along the perimeter, which references the earlier historic photo with the green, I'm sorry, the brick foundation wall of the Violet House as well. And it will have a blue stone cap on it, approximately two foot wide, a foundation wall. Next slide, please. This is the elevations, the south elevation, showing what you would see if you had your back to the road. Showing the three-foot-high foundation wall. The maximum height of the, at the roof peak is 20 feet. There is a clear scoring window around the perimeter, which allows that space to be naturally ventilated. Eight-foot, an eight-foot-high curved portion before the roof begins to curve up. There's also gutter incorporated into that band, which runs above the eight-foot pipe. The glass here is, there's a concern, there's an interest in controlling the heat gain in this building. So there are going to be some kind of blinds or panels on the interior. And also the possibility for controlling the amount of heat gain through these roof areas as well. We're thinking about a technology now which allows you to darken those windows. But on the band. This is the brick base, the blue stone cap. Next slide, please. This is the north elevation. It shows where people are coming from the nature train platform, where they have to walk along and enter this. It's an open porch area, which is recessed. Glazing. A little balcony, which is an extension of that kind of long platform, observation platform, which I mentioned earlier, which allows people to just kind of poke out there and observe, overlook the whole garden scale train layout. Next slide, please. So this is a view of that entry. These are people standing underneath the platform there with the little pathway, perhaps stepping stones, which would lead you here. You'd be able to enter the building. A nature balcony there, where people can look out and observe the whole garden scale layout. Again, I mentioned the galvanized steel, which is painted, and in this case, similar color palette that was used on some of the other train buildings that are currently constructed. Next slide, please. East elevation. The building's very symmetrical. Here you're seeing the kind of gable portion above the entry from the side. And the clear story windows is, again. Next slide, please. And it has also an additional service entry. The trains actually enter through these panels, which are guillotine-type panels, as if they were made double long window. They open, they slide upward. And it's not drawn in here. Are the actual tracks themselves, which are unelevated trestles here. So Jack likes to call that bench work. It facilitates him working on the trains. But they come in at waist-high, also in inside the building. So they can always, they stand while they're working on it and just facilitates the maintenance of the trains. There is going to be a basement in this building, which we haven't depicted here, but it would not modify in any way the exterior. It's just to allow for additional storage and some of the equipment having to do with the garden scale layout, pumps, condensers, and storage base for the actual sculptures themselves. Next slide, please. This is a roof plan just showing the roof, the glazing and the protective grating and the gable portion over the entry. Next slide, please. Just more a close-up view of the conservatory view from the east side.
Next slide, please.
Does that complete this first part?
This is all of the presentation of the training of the garden scale.
Okay, I think what I'd like to do is stop at this point and have Jim comment on that and take questions before you move on to dates.
Perfect, understood.
Does that work for everybody? Let's break it down into bite-sized pieces. All right, Jim.
So I have a number of overall comments that I can get to toward the end, but I thought it'd be good to stop at this point and probably talk about these. Only, you know, I never take the ability to comment in the future after we've had further discussion. But the only real comment that I had this time was kind of an overall one related to the nature train. That is just that, as you mentioned, Seth, the train itself as proposed, the ride-on train, doesn't exactly follow what was in the master plan. And I don't know if we had a full understanding of exactly what the garden plan was going to be. I think the intent is the same as what was in the master plan. I'm not necessarily recommending that we update the master plan. But I did just want to note that, you know, this loop is a little bit different. And I don't know if we do the details at the time. And I would encourage everyone to look at the master plan and the historic document, just kind of see what was there. But I think in the time, we talked about the fact that this had already been disturbed in terms of this site. So there's not a lot of concern there. But generally speaking, the rest of it does seem to follow the alignments. It's just that the loop is a little bit bigger.
Hey, Seth, just wants to look back at that original one and give us a side-by-side comparison if you're different.
Sure. And the only reason I bring it up is just that, you know, again, it was a concept at the time. The master plan is a concept. So we're obviously not going to update it like to the foot. But this is, you know, the most visible part of the property. You know, just being up, probably that's all. So I just raise it as a comment. I'm not suggesting necessarily go back through the master planning process. Again, it was a concept, but it is a little different maybe than what we originally thought.
The master plan as well went through SEAKER. Is that correct? And when did that happen? 2002, was it? 2003?
You had it up.
2018 to 2022. So it was a four-year process that had some amendments and variations over time. But in 2022, it was finalized. And I believe there is a part three that was prepared by this project.
I think that was before I was. Excellent. And again, I just bring it up just in terms of intensity and visibility. And I think that's going to be, you know, part of the discussion of what we have here. But at this point in time, that's really all I have. There's a lot, I think, to digest of what was proposed as the first time around. And some would be new to this, so.
So I'll open it up to planning board members for comments, questions at this point. Understanding that we haven't really had a lot of time to do this and digest it. Anybody want to plunge in? And I am, we're going to get to a procedural resolution. Certainly am going to suggest that we not limit a site visit to two people. I think as we have in the past, with something of this magnitude and complexity, we'll be looking to schedule a time that's acceptable to the entire planning board. Does that make sense, Jim?
I just have like curious logistic questions. The little train, right? Like, how fast is that little train going? It's like people are just sitting with their legs over the sides. Like, I'm just, right? Because this one runs different than the other one. Like, is that going fast or should it be slow? Where does their feet sit? I'm just curious.
So, great question. So there are various types of engines that will look over at the front of this train, of course. So we're going to be running steam engines, electric, as well as a form of gas turbine as well. All of them have some different traveling speeds, but for the most part, it's about five miles an hour, five to six miles an hour. So it's very slow. The cars are actually modified and designed with rails for your feet to sit on. So there is kind of positioning for where you're sitting. And you're not just kind of loosely sitting on there. They are made to be ridden, in a sense.
I have one other question, which is about the little structures. Do they light up?
We are not proposing any lighting. There will be interior lighting in the conservatory, but we are not proposing any lighting as part of the garden scale train or any other element of the site.
Is there any water?
That is a great, I did forget to mention that. We, and this is a great picture. We can take a look at it from here. The six-inch water main runs right through here, this area. Goes from River Road all the way to Astor Woods. There is also on this side, towards the fence that abuts the Birdfoot property, there is a user pole already installed with electrical that comes down to mid to deal with a managed gate that's here. So our tap for water and our tap for electrical are right here, and we'll be running those right down that alley into the building. That's our intention for water and power and communication.
We're not proposing any visitor amenities on this property or in this project?
There will be no sanitary disposal facility of any kind.
One, just one question about the Hellgate Bridge. Was that part of the master plan in concept? Because it does really seem to dominate the composition. And I just, I'm getting a sense that this is becoming a very busy, heavy, kind of cluttered site. And it, I mean, it's fun and it's terrific, but you know how wonderful it would be in a site that doesn't have an extensive and important history of its own and, you know, being located in an important historic district.
No, I'll just stick to the first part of that, which is, is my understanding of the master plan included a signature element spanning the entire west area across that, whether it was intended to be a signature bridge like the one that's being proposed now or whether it was intended to be another bridge. I'm not exactly sure how that discussion unfolded, I have to be honest. I'd have to look back through some notes or something. But it was always intended to start on one side and span the entire low area. That was always.
My revelation was that we understood there would be spanning the area. I don't think that we would ever, I don't think we would ever have knew at that time that it would reach the height of this bridge and the complexity. I mean, we were just thinking of span.
Yeah, and what's the distance Yeah, and what's the distance from the apex of the bowstring to say the road bed?
So from here to here?
No, to the road bed.
Uh, to here, to here. Um, and I'm not quite sure I can.
What did you say? Oh, my, okay. You said it was 50 to the base of the, uh, the drainage.
During the master plan, I do remember, we definitely, and I'll have to go back a little too, cause I don't remember exactly what you said, but I do remember that we noted that it would be a significant structure. I don't know, we talked about heights. Definitely talked about. It's a big gap.
Uh, are you anything else? Anyone else?
I just want to know, um, Seth, I know you've talked to the fire department in the past about the other sections. I just think it would be good to go back and run this past them again. Obviously this part's out closer to the road, it's easier to get to. But I just think letting them know that these other phases are going in, make sure they don't have any other issues or concerns with the fire department and the fire inspector. I'm guessing since you've already gone back in the woods and had those discussions, that probably will cover in terms of their concerns.
In the first two phases, we did, uh, have the fire inspector come out and they did provide a letter. Um, we did reach out to them by email, sent a letter back to them, we'll continue on.
Is there a railing on the trestle area?
Can we go back to the rendering? That one rendering of, uh, a little bit further. Um, yeah, it just, it illustrates again, um, these are unfinished sections. All of those sections now have a rail, um, with, that is protective rail, um, intended to not only, um, prevent people from falling off, but in the event that something derails and happens to fall over, I believe it has structural stability enough to be able to, uh, to maintain that.
Trestle sections are identical to the ones that are already being constructed?
Not identical because they are a little different in height or, you know, location. Um, but they all will have, you know, the similar vents in all of them, any trestle section, even up to the small ones that, as you saw, go up only a couple of feet to the platform. Those, everything that's a trestle will have the same rail.
And how high is the rail?
Yeah, thirty six.
Okay. There are no more questions on this part of what we're hearing tonight. Remember we're ready to move on to the second part.
So as part of this, um, in, for two reasons, um, uh, there was an evaluation done across the whole entire properties for security purposes, um, after that. So as a result of that, there were some recommendations by a security manager for some of the things to change on the site. Um, and then twofold, um, because of the location of the garden scale and the base four loop, um, there's a proposal for some reconfiguration of gates to have managed access there. Um, so that, uh, you know, this, this won't be as traveled by the general public. Um, it's noted that T House Lane is a private road, that is a private driveway. It's not a town, a town road. So, uh, the proposed changes are as follows. The, there is an existing managed gate that leads down to a bridge and goes to the T Core property. That's located right here. That existing gate, just the gate itself is proposed to be removed. Removing the stone walls would be too much disturbance, more than it's worth to take those out. We would be taking hitching posts out and there's also a small, um, electrical keypad for the entry here. So all of this will be removed. Um, that's in favor of, uh, the gate that exists currently at Fern Cliff entrance, which is here. Um, we'll, we'll have stone pillars added to it and a managed gate. So here, this will become stone pillars and there will be a managed gate with, uh, a post, uh, located here, uh, so that you can get it. Um, so this will become a managed gate. Um, that's like I said, right here, there's an existing fence line. You can see that fence line. The proposal is to continue that fence line up and across the driveway. So here's an illustration of going along the fence line and then cutting perpendicular across to, uh, the existing T House lane. And that is proposed to be a managed gate, which looks very similar to this. Um, so trying to keep the stone consistent and relocating that entrance, that gives us, uh, points of control here and here. And then the private driveway can continue along down with the removal of this gate. Moving to the shared driveway, which is the extension of both KPH two and T Core land that goes out to River Road. That's a common shared access. However, the road, as you can see, meanders through that. During previous approval with this board, we had proposed to remove the gate at Master Court. That's this one here and remove the gate here that leads up into T Core in favor of a location here for one managed gate. Um, similarly, we're proposing to remove just the gate itself, as well as any of the, um, components for entry, uh, on both of these locations. Um, the, any of the stonework will remain. The detail of this stonework is an older period, more of a dry laid stonework. So for this wall, um, which we are proposing to move, and this was one of the recommendations from the security professional. Once people are down here, you're almost a thousand feet into the site, a quarter mile into the site. And you're, you, you, for security purposes, you're already too far into the property. So it was recommended that the control access be moved to, uh, further down the road so that there's only a few hundred feet and almost visibility down to the access location from River Road. Um, so what we're proposing there is actually a stone wall configuration, much like the one that's here on Master Courts, um, in this area with a managed gate and a pedestal. All of the pedestals will be upgraded to a new, uh, just a new face. Um, but that's the proposal for the relocation of the gates and the walls. Um, what I didn't mention technically was that there's 280 linear feet of this matching fence that we're proposing to extend along here. When we do that work, there is already, like I said, power that runs right along here. Uh, we'll be going across the driveway. We plan to use, um, uh, the cobblestone to replace that, to define the entrance, as well as just a passive way to, um, to, you know, build back the pavement. And then that electric line will actually continue along the fence line and anywhere there is new to get to that new managed.
All right, um, so first off, the Aster, uh, the Aster Lane track, I guess, on River Road. Um, I wasn't sure where these were first. Seth, these maps are really helpful because I couldn't quite picture where they were in the images you gave us that are on, uh, right and up there. So a map like this would be good as part of the submission. Um, and we obviously have the PowerPoint now. Um, so I don't think there's any issues there, but I did wonder, I was wondering how were you going to get the power up there for that? And actually the other was, well, how do you get the power up there for the keypad? Is there already, um, typing grounds to just run through? Or are we going to be talking about any digging or anything?
So for this one, that user pole with the existing, uh, managed gate for this entrance is actually right here. There's already a electric pedestal set up there and a service and meter. Um, so we will actually just be pulling off of that same existing meter, uh, running a line along the fence line here, so along the front face of this fence, crossing, as I just mentioned, replacing with cobblestone, continuing around the fence line, just up against it to minimize the disturbance and then bringing that all the way up to this managed gate. So along with the fence, the new fence, 280 feet will be the electrical line and communications.
Trenching a new conduit?
That's right. Yep, which is, you know, with the posts and, uh, you know, the other things that need to go in with the fence, you're going to need to do a little bit of excavation work for that anyway. It's trying to keep the disturbance in that one control location.
Are you trenching down below as well on, um, Aster Lane?
Uh, so here, yes. Um, uh, actually here is a unique situation. Uh, by moving this back, uh, what we did, um, in a previous project on the site was upgraded all of the electrical to three phase power. We'll be putting in, um, many additional boxes, utility boxes. It just so happens that this pullout right here, there's an electrical box right there. So our power is going to come from that electrical box to go into this managed gate as well. So a very short one to do that.
So the last question I have is if we're, if we have any concern about trenching by T House Lane? I don't know the answer to that.
If that area hasn't been cleared in the prior archaeological reports, I presume that we would ask for that as we do in any other situations. This is obviously a highly sensitive, historic property, so, you know, I wouldn't say so.
So that was one question. Um, the, the other one I have at this time, um, is mainly concerning T House Lane and access. Um, and I don't exactly know the answer, I've found it very often. Um, but do people use T House Lane to get to Fern Cliff? And right now to me it appears, and I don't know if it's official or unofficial, it appears to me to be the secondary access to the Fern Cliff. And so my concern looking at this is by moving the gate, we're not cutting off that second access to Fern Cliff. I think, and I don't know if it actually is, it just looks like it on paper. I don't know if you can explain that or if Fern Cliff has any, um, you know, right of ways or needs that allow them to do that. But if it is a secondary access, then that we're, we're taking it down to one access to the Fern Cliff. That does raise some concerns you may make. But I don't know if you have any thoughts or answers on what is and isn't allowed, whether it is used that way or not.
Um, as I mentioned, uh, T House Lane is a private driveway for T Core. Um, uh, it does provide access to the gatehouse along the way. Uh, the connection to Fern Cliff was made, I believe, at the time that this was used for, um, the previous development at that site. Um, uh, they, there are no deed of rights or easements or any access restrictions or benefits to Fern Cliff.
Look, let me say, look. For emergency purposes of setting the fire. If the main, if the only what you're saying entrance into Fern Cliff is through their main gate. If I, the part that others would not want or not wish there was to be an alternative way to get in, then let's say trees were down or there was some sort of natural catastrophe and they could not get in. I believe people assume that the other, whether right or wrong, I believe that it is, certainly looks as if that is an alternative way to get into the facility that would need emergency services. So, uh, certainly is a question I would want the fire department, when you get them out there to look at and respond to, um, because it does seem for something as highly active and intensively used as Fern Cliff, having only one means of ingressing, ingress.
Where is it on this map? There is the secondary.
This is Fern Cliff coming in, right? This is Fern Cliff, this is T House Lane. So the proposal is to move the gate from somewhere around here, so, that's correct, maybe, up to somewhere around here.
That's right.
Right now, whether it's legal or not, or people are allowed to, you know, I, I don't know how many people use it, but this is open effectively right here. So it does provide a secondary access in. So I just have concern, I'd like the fire department to weigh in just in terms of emergency access. We are making this now, you know, and this is more of a road than a driveway in Fern Cliff, but it's still the same access in now. Just making sure we're paying attention to these safety concerns because of all the residents and the daycare and all that.
Well, and I, uh, I should say, Seth, but I know that when we've made site visits to Fern Cliff in the past, you know, people do use it, whether they should be or shouldn't be. So I think we need to look at that more.
Wasn't there an issue that came up with the greenhouse development a few months ago where, uh, there was no desire to lighten that? I mean, it would've been really hard to lighten that upper entrance. And wasn't the provision that if fire trucks needed access?
I thought they said, yes.
If you go through Fern Cliff Drive to get to that part of the property, and does that gate interfere with that access?
Cause we specifically asked regarding the first meeting we had about the gatehouse, we'd have the fire department look at the width of that entrance there, which we don't want to concern. And I think they reported back that if they had to get in the other way, they could. So that sort of mixed messages there.
Certainly, certainly. Um, so, uh, we are also concerned with emergency services to the property. Um, and we, as you see, we already have managed gates at almost all of the entrances to the larger structures on our sites. Um, those managed gates are operated with a code that the fire department has for entry when they need.
Well, just talk to them, add that to the application, add new information so that we can put this question to that.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, the road still exists, right? So as long as they can get in through a code, wouldn't they be able?
As long as you get that all coming.
Exactly.
Although that's a private driveway.
Right.
It's a four block.
That was the other question that I had is what, what is entailed by a managed? It doesn't mean that there's a booth and a person there, right? It's just.
There's codes.
It's codes and a gate.
It's got to have a call log.
Have cameras or are there any other kind of monitoring? Does a person need to be there and active to open and close the gate?
So the existing keypad, um, that are on site, which are like this one, we can take and zoom in and take a look. Those are dumb. If you, for lack of a better term, uh, they are just a number of keypad entry.
Yeah.
Um, the proposed upgrade is actually, does include some IT components, which is both visual, uh, audible, and also just functions as a key.
So Seth, um, maybe if I study this, I'll figure it out. Some of the stone walls you're talking about are historic stone walls, right? You pointed out some of the retaining walls and various things. Are there supposed to be new stone walls?
So this is, uh, this was put in by previous ownership when they put in the managed gates. So somewhere in the early 2010s, uh, the previous managed. This, this gate is being removed, but the walls are still remaining. Uh, these are newer walls, uh, just seems a shame to demolish them. Uh, and it actually disturbs these nice rock features, which were difficult to construct in also. Um, and the gate that is actually mortised or is on Master Courts here. Um, and this is on both sides. It's a stone, stone feature. Uh, that's more of a dry laid and that is a historic wall. Those historic walls are certainly to remain. So we're proposing just to remove the gated portion, just the, 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 the modern functioning gated portion from those. And, uh, with the wall that is here, we're proposing to replicate the stone that is used in these to match those two, uh, since they are along the same drive. And then with the stone that is supposed, uh, for, it's supposed to look like this for Master Courts here, further up the drive. So that this wall and this wall would match more of this. This is actually a newer gate that was also installed at the same time as this one. So it has the look of this gate, but we're going to go with the Master Courts, uh, older, graduated one.
So you're, you're going to introduce new walls that are intended to look like the original walls?
Correct.
Okay, I just have to think that through and, um, you know, sometimes we don't like to see additions that are mimicking something historically so that they can be misread as these were original to the property. So I just want to think about that. Anyone else? If there's nothing else, then I think we have procedural resolutions.
procedural resolution for the board's consideration for the application by T Core LLC, KPH two LLC for site plan and special use permit and wetlands permit. I think we also got to have a fence permit in there. So that's, that's a, fence permit. So you didn't mention fences. For construction of miniature train, garden train, constructing gates, walls and fencing of 189 and 195 River Road within the HB 20 zoning district. Accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for further review. Classifying the action as type two under SEAKER, for which coordinated by our quality review is not required. Scheduling the public hearing for May 5th at 6:05. Full sentence in CAD, the WIC, HAPAC and county planning. And I think we recommended all planning board members try to attend the segment.
And I'll leave it internally to Jim and Gretchen and you to work on some possible dates for a second. And including along with that date back and CAD, so much for I copy and running on the same site as it. Then have a motion, someone second?
Okay.
All those in favor? I endorse extension motion here.
Really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Very much.
Good work.
Well, that concludes. Um, that concludes the public hearing. Uh, no, excuse me, that concludes the new application portion of this evening's meeting. And we'll now move into the public hearing section. Um, first up is Alexander Wright, 25 years old, site plan, special use and wetland permit, tree removal and light brush clearing. Um, they have asked for a continuation of the public hearing in that they have not, uh, received information that on their DEC jurisdictional determination. Also delaying this is we are following up with CPL. We've not received, uh, an estimate, uh, for their review, which we asked for. Um, and, um, there's still not been any conclusion that I'm aware of on their, uh, concerns raised about the escrow for Hudsonia. So there's a few outstanding issues about this. And so, um, they were asking to go to.
May 5th.
May 5th. So may I have a motion to continue the public hearing on Alexander Wright to May 5th? Motion second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post extension motion carried. Next public hearing this evening is that of Joel Herb, 443 Mill Road, site plan review for the abandonment of a micro hydro, which was previously approved. Do you hear Joel?
Aye. Uh, so since the last meeting we had, um, Susan, I did apply to the DEC for permit to do the string management information. Met a letter, uh, last week, uh, saying that no permit was required on section 401, uh, article 15 or article 11.
Jim?
So, uh, I did see the, the 401, um, it's not my area of expertise, but I still don't believe that that's a jurisdictional determination. So I still believe we're waiting on a JP for wetlands from DEC.
It's not a state wetland.
The new wetlands regulations have said that at any point?
I asked them about that and they said, uh, it doesn't apply to the.
I think we need it, right? What you gave us was the 401, which is the waters rounded, but not specifically the jurisdictional determination. determination on wetland. Which I had put in my memo last time, saying that you need to submit for jurisdictional determination before the mine works proceed. So I, I think that's still out there. Last time, we had also discussed, potentially, and I think the board had agreed, the professional landscape architect or similar professional provides some stamp plans regarding reestablishment of the area of disturbance along the stream bed. I don't think I've seen updated plans for that. But also requested that the sill fencing be shown on the plans before any work be done.
There are sill plans, sill fences on the plan.
I think, look again if there are. I don't remember seeing that on a report. This is the site restoration plan. I didn't see a note showing where that sill fencing would go.
I'm a little confused on the plantings. I mean, we provided you the state D E C planting restoration, which we're going to be following their hard plantings on, on the site.
Yeah, no, you would show some, some plantings on there, but I think the request had been made for a landscape professional to provide a landscaping plan. And we had asked that the sill fencing be shown on the plan, but it wasn't there. There was also, let's finish up this in the last one, but there was also a request made at the last one to consider a fish ladder to be installed as part of the reclamation work. And I didn't see that. Again, we haven't seen any updated plans yet. So those were the three outstanding issues, as far as I can tell. Open up to anyone else?
Is that a part of the code that I have to put in a P E L file?
It was a request that was made by, by a board member. There's nothing in it goes specifically stating that that's required.
So the lease, Hudsonia has done a fish survey. Dr. Schmidt did a fish survey above the dam and below the dam, different eels, both below and above the dam.
Well, let me look, here, here was my suggestion, going back to it. You know, the damage that's been done to whatever species live there, we're not reversing that. So my suggestion would just in good faith, to put something back, should it be needed by some of the disturbances that's happened, it's not harmful, it's thoughtful. And that's why I made the request. I don't know if there was a requirement. Sorry?
I didn't hear your last.
Just, just that it's, that it's thoughtful. It's thoughtful based on the interruptions that's been done to a lot of the species that, that use that area as habitat. And so my suggestion was, it's a, it's just a thoughtful consideration that I preferred. I, I could be overruled by my members here, but that's why I made that suggestion.
I really appreciate your thoughtfulness. And if Hudsonia had not found eels upstream of the dam, I totally agree with you. We've also had other professionals from the D E C who's a eel expert and has looked at this particular dam and agreed with Dr. Schmidt that eels are definitely not seen this dam in our property as a barrier to eels.
So if I'm correct, we're waiting for some additional information, Jim, as to what we're still.
CPL also? When did we talk about experts to look at just the mitigation plan of?
Well, I also think that, maybe I didn't mean correct, but I thought there was a suggestion made that we needed to have the work that was undertaken observed and monitored by a professional. Now, we're not at that point yet, but I think that was part of the discussion that maybe some.
It looks like rock blasted and moved down there, that was solid, that's no longer solid. That did include, so in the draft approval resolution, which we always include after we'll be able to get into a public hearing, I did require in here, and we can certainly change the language, but it does, it requires the opportunity to pay fees and costs related to any professional consultant assistance at the town or right by requires to complete and implement this approval. And that was back to, the building department may not have all the expertise to look at bank stabilization, and so we were looking at CPL to, to provide that backup service.
Can I just remind you, were there measures that were taken or that were requested to be taken to secure the site through this spring rain to ensure that we're not dealing with other runoff? Has that been done? Or are we with that?
We did, we, on last meeting, we did request that sill fence be amended immediately.
And I think that's what Jim was going to, in terms of notations and everything.
Definitely. Has that been done? It's a yes or no?
Our professional engineer said that Mount of Dirt is so far away.
Has a sill fence been put in yesterday?
Sorry?
Has a sill fence been put in yesterday?
Uh, no, it's not.
Then I think we're needing to continue.
Well, I'll also add, as I went quickly over the, the letter that you shared from D E C, and it was part of that, that they did qualify their response by saying that there's, there is a requirement for you to be consistent with the nationwide permit.
Of course.
For the corp engineers. And I, I think I requested that, evidence of that compliance, whether it's a letter or email or, you know, whatever it is that led you to believe that. Also the, the specific in there that you take silk management measures for any work that's going on, even though it's just a class C stream, you still have to manage the runoff and erosion.
The sooner we can put the stream back, back together, there'll be a lot less turbidity caused by the fact that there is operation in it. So sooner we can resolve this, you'll have less turbidity. Certainly, there isn't any coming from, that I will put in as self defense.
All right, let me, let me ask Jim to review for all of our purposes exactly what's still outstanding, Jim, in your opinion. So let's get a clear list to Joel here tonight about what we need. And then we'll decide whether, and you'll tell us if you can have it by the next meeting or if you're gonna need us to continue it for two months. Jim?
I believe we need a jurisdictional determination from the D E C. We need the sill fence to be shown on the plans as well as, again, it's, it's up to the board, and I think you may have agreed to this last time, but you can bring it up wrong. A professional landscape architect or similar licensed professional to stamp the landscape plans, that they will do what they're supposed to do on the bank. And, and the other question was just regarding the fish ladder.
When you reply with all of this other information, I think it's up to you as to decide whether you wish to honor your request, but I'd like you to acknowledge that the request was made by a member of the planning board. And if you choose not to go in that direction, just state so in the meeting.
Yeah, I just also wanna say, I know sometimes it might sound like we're asking for things that some professionals may have said are, you know, not necessarily required. But, you know, we have to all trust each other in this process, and if we lose trust in, in the quality and the consideration of the space and the wetlands through what got us here to begin with, we wanna ensure that we're protecting, you know, not only our duty, but the landscape. And so any little extra measures that you go out of your way to show that consideration really means a lot, because we're here for a reason. And we got here from an entanglement that's unfortunate, and we, we all just want it to be done and done right.
As do I. And, yeah, I'm sorry that, that may have seemed like I'm not trustworthy, but I don't know what to say. I'd love to have a sit down and cup of coffee with you someday and explain a little bit more about why I left a very good job to get, it's a no money to do hydroelectricity in this nation in a fish friendly way.
Okay, good.
So just, as I said, the only other thing, Joel, we did bring up your letter, is that the letter from D E C did have, and Greggy brought this up, I forgot to mention it, that they did qualify their letter, provided US Army Corps of Engineers concurs with your request for 404 nationwide permit coverage. So we, I think.
I did submit a joint application, I did call the Army Corps of Engineers, and they said, as they said three or four years ago, when we talked about the nationwide permit, they said nationwide permit concept is such that if you follow all the rules that are in nationwide, in this case, nationwide permit number three, don't bug it on, because they got, they were the session. I've asked them for a letter, they said, just follow nationwide permit three and on the phone, I'll get you the name of the person, I'll put that in a line.
Well, they can send you an email to that effect, can't they? Whether they just.
He would think so, but they didn't.
Well, I don't know what to tell you. But it doesn't seem to me unrealistic to ask for an email to that effect, so that we have something in order to confirm that.
Yeah. Do you have a copy of nationwide permit number three and what the stipulations are?
To the board and to Brian and.
I guess.
And I think, Jim, you read through the.
Well, I know, I know you just gave us a copy of that permit, it just seems like you got a very specific letter back, this was not a form letter. You got a very specific letter back from, that's the thing, D E C stating that there's no further off 401, no further optimization of 401, if any law act is required, provided US Army Corps of Engineers concurs with your request for 404 nationwide permit. If you don't have it in writing, unfortunately, I mean, we need it in writing for the file. The only thing that I can suggest at this point is that I pass this on to CPL and ask for their, you know, thoughts on this, because this is outside my area of expertise. But when I read the letter, this is what it, it reads to me. So I'd like to send it to CPL and have them concur that.
We're a very large Army Corps project, a hydroelectric project, and when you make a joint application, which I did.
Joel, I don't, I just, I don't wanna hear about other applications. I really, I wanna, we're concentrating on what we're doing here. We've made, we've told you what we need, and we're making a suggestion that we enlist our engineers to help.
I'll do my best. Thank you.
So Joel, do you want to be back next month? Do you have anything prepared by?
Sorry?
Are you asking to return within a month or will you need longer?
Sooner if you can.
I would continue, I'd like the motion to continue to next month's May 5th meeting. May I have a motion?
Someone.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody, all those in favor?
Aye.
Extension motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the third public hearing this evening is that of Ernesto Castillo in Marion, 26 Kelly Street, site plan review and special use permit, window replacement. Good evening.
Hi, I'm a, a decent architect, representing the clients. Certainly the trees.
Oh, come on. One you buy.
But that was extra entertainment for this evening, wasn't it?
Totally, totally. You never get to do train storage shit outside glass. That's been a personal. Just to remind everyone, this, my clients installed windows, the, this window in particular was the window that we all looked at, that was installed over the kitchen sink. Casement windows, we didn't get approval to do that, so we brought that in front of you and we all came up and visited that. The other thing, what's pointed out is that back when they had the condenser units installed back in 2017, that never came before the board too, so we're, wanted everyone to look at that. And the, the clients are not opposed to coming up with a fencing solution of that height that is certainly not very nice looking to them.
Do they have a fencing solution?
Not at this time. We wanted to see where you are at with whether that is gonna be what we need to solve that problem. I mean, I know those things show up on buildings all over the township, so it's.
Jim, we have, we need to add?
Mostly just follow ups from the last meeting. You, you touched on the heat pumps were installed without a permit. They were, the plans in the application have been updated to include the heat pumps and we're to discuss any changes or modifications that should be made regarding screening or securing. HAPAC did go out and take a look, noted that it seems likely all the windows have been replaced since the one was constructed. And once newly installed windows are painted, they should now cause like potential changes they do now. Regarding the heat pumps, HAPAC noted a fence, a fence painted to match the house or evergreen landscaping planned before me around visual screen could be considered. And I just wanted to note that the materials submitted don't meet the full site plan submission requirements, so we will be looking for waiver requirements, which I think is acceptable in this case, rather than being ground disturbance or changes in flooring or anything like that. So we're allowing just the discussion of kind of where we stand on any screening of the units and.
Can we get a view from like the, is this from the road roughly?
Yeah. There, I think if you keep going, there's.
Yeah. Actually probably. And who's there so busy about?
There's the front view, and then if you scroll up a little bit, that's, you can kinda see where the road is there. So that's coming up the hill. And then if you click through to the next one after this, that's the coming downhill.
I asked, who did the site visit?
Yeah, I was late to All Stars. I, I think what's most noticeable about it is the fact that the window frame is unpainted, and I think if it were painted in, it would make a considerable difference. I did note that this is a portion of the house that has asbestos shingle siding on it. So at some point, somebody must have cut through the siding, and I hope that they took to require precautions for that. Glad I wasn't standing nearby when that happened, because the window side was enlarged and that location was much smaller to clear the cabinets, and that was a little bit longer. I didn't really find the installation of the, of the heat pumps to be so objectionable. It, it does give a little bit of a cluttered appearance, but I think it would be fairly easy to mask with just a simple planting, doesn't have to be a completed hedge or anything like that, a couple of non-invasive plants that don't go very high.
Is that comparable to the HAPAC suggestion about fencing, paint of the color of the house?
I think that would be, that would be fine as well. It's, the house seems to be, it has a lot of variety in it, there are a couple of different eras of construction, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of integrity that's being impacted by this. And the window around the other side is almost not belliesome, although it just fits within everything else that's, that's there. Again, it was, it was painted to match the rest of the house, I think it would be, it would escape notice.
Sharon?
I can't remember. Was it a basic door in the back or not?
Say that again.
Is it like a basic, um, a basic door?
Door.
Yeah. Door in the back or not? Can't remember.
No, I think if you go right in the lower level, kitchen to basement, yeah. And there's actually stair access, because there's a button down there too. On that lower level. Which is why in a way, the planting solution might be a little nicer than the fence one, only because I think this window right here probably is, is part of that room that's in there. So instead of looking at the back of the fence, you'd look at some nice planted stuff, which might be nicer.
Is that casement window, is that two casement windows that open or is it one?
Yeah, two casement windows that open. I mean, one, you know, individually.
Right. I mean, I don't know how wide it is, but possibly it would have been better to put one casement window, like a 606 casement window, which is one and a half foot.
Yeah, I mean, the, the windows were installed before I got on board. But I think that the one thing that's positive about it is you could tell because of these longer double humps over here, once this gets painted up proportionally, I think it'll look, it'll fit in nicer with what's happening on this elevation.
One of the, I will share with my colleagues and anyone else, one of the, I told you that the town has created a committee to look at stream lining deficiencies and. and one of the main topics that has arisen over time is projects that are undertaken without proper permitting, and how can we do a better job of making the public aware of what needs to happen, how do we get the word out, how do we deal with it? And while I agree certainly that with everything that's been said about this house, it is an example, if you will, of changes that occur that seem modest and small in scale. But if they continue to happen in the community of Rhine Cliff over time, the characteristics of that community are going to be lost. I'm not at all picking on the people who are here, I'm just saying, I get it, and I can live with painting this out, but it is a significant change in the size of a window, and I think we just have to understand that cumulatively, over many, many years, a community's character can be lost and degraded. So I encourage them all, you, to think about ways that we can be more proactive in catching these proposed changes before they bring in somebody and it's already done. And then we don't want to be in the position and say, you know what, take it out. But I don't want, I don't want to get to that point. I want to head that off before it becomes an issue, but I'm concerned that there's so many of them that keep occurring, that we have to figure out a way, a way to correct this kind of spiral we're on. So that's just a little bit of a soapbox comment, but one that I think we all need to take to mind, H A P A C and all of us, in terms of, you know, getting the word out. Handbook is great, we have to figure out ways to get that circulated more so that people are aware in advance of making a decision, the sensitivity of what. That's what we really wanted to protect Rhine Cliff, because of these characteristics and the small scale and size and compactness of the community in which we live. So, but I'll ask others for their opinion, and then we'll.
Well, I just, I have to agree with you, and Rhine Cliff in particular is a very difficult case, because so much of Rhine Cliff is involved in the variety of changes that have occurred over time. There's a certain logic that's behind that, but you really have to know a lot about the community and how it functions, and how it's functioned over the years, in order to, you know, really make meaningful statements. It's not like a pristine district where everything was built within the span of five percent of years, and within a certain style, where you can really, you know, preserve things as they are. And I think it's important to bear in mind that what we're most interested in are those character-defining features and the integrity of the buildings, and, you know, the things that we take to be representative of the larger, broader principles of the district. And it's important to be able to review these in real time and not really after the fact, because it does kind of put your thumb on the scale, if it's already been done. It's like, oh, do I really want to, you know, beat them up because of this? And just look across the street at what happened there in, you know, 1992. You know, we can suffer from that. And I think there is a lot of, a lot of importance and a lot of value in the Rhine Cliff district. And it just, it takes a lot of thought and time and attention. And I'm always appreciative when, you know, people come before us and they've obviously looked around and have compared other buildings and have found that context that's, you know, so ripe and important for the district there. So that's why.
All right, I see, what I'm getting is a sense, I feel, that the window is acceptable or to be painted, and that the, that there needs to be some camouflageing of the units. I would be, you're not prepared tonight to tell us what that proposed camouflageing would be. I would be comfortable, if you all agree, that it could either be landscaped or it could be a proposed fence. I would be okay with going ahead with this tonight, conditioning it upon receipt of the screening information. And if you choose to go along the lines of fencing as opposed to landscaping, then we would want the concurrance of the zoning administrator that the fencing meets the requirements that we need. So, does that make sense, Jim? Does that seem acceptable to others? So.
Yeah, with the fence technology and fence permits, we'd be approving a fence permit if one is necessary tonight, so.
Well, I.
I would push, I'd push that, Jim. I'd say you're going to be blocking light and everything else, that would be pointless.
So if you would have agreed tonight that you will come in with a proposal for landscaping, then you eliminate needing a fence permit, anything other than that.
Sounds great.
And then I can review it as we may be conditional upon a landscaping screening plan. Does that work?
Aye, that's for me. So.
Second?
Second.
I'll pull the board, Ed.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
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 I'm deleting, and I will go.
Do we have any planning board, or we reach public comments or anything?
I'm going to ask.
Well, that's next, jumping ahead.
Anyone have a public comment? I shouldn't move to close the public hearing, too, I got ahead of myself here. So is there any one thing that we're like wishing to object to anything we talked about? Or concur? If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Forward.
Second? All right, and then like, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then what I said after.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Sorry, it's a little discombobulated here. The one, two, three, four.
Do you want to go officially through this?
Sure.
Are we good? I mean, for good, I just want to make sure we're all good. I mean, it's pretty simple, but.
I think we're good, we're good.
All right, resolution's been good, just.
Two, three, uh, the fourth. Coming to this evening is Christopher Travers, 500 Route 308, site plan review for the construction of detached two-car garage.
Hello, Ed. Our executive, Chris Travers and Elizabeth Comstock, who desire to build the detached two-car garage adjacent to the distance from the disneying anchor white garage here off of Route 308. The existing garage.
That's like a ring thing, it's a horse cleaning, or something.
A shell for the.
Anyway, it was built very soon after the original structure, I think. But it doesn't function very well as garage, quite narrow. And in fact, that Comstock uses it as an art studio and wants to have more use of it as an art studio. So rather than build a separate studio, it seemed to Chris and made more sense to go separate detached two-car garage and bring that studio. So that is the nature of the application. We had a site visit with the members of H A P A C, Marty and Eddie Hammer, and we also had Edna and Delise from the planning board. Everybody had interesting thoughts and observations. Delise raised a question about a pile of rocks at the, near the back corner, I guess it's the southeast corner, and felt that perhaps it was evidence of Native American activity. So we reached out to her and then had done the initial A1A and B3, and had them look at that again in Wordtail, and they sent a follow-up letter about that. They found that there were some bricks under, within the pile, and, you know, Chris may know a little bit more about actually that.
Yes, it's an area that's been used for debris from various constructions. So all under there, there's a lot of brick debris, and so the bricks were underneath the rock pile. And so they did the analysis of the, of the bricks that were, you know, from nineteenth century. Nineteenth century, yes, basically.
There was also, it was very interesting, because I, Delise brought up that question, which was a fascinating one, that there are these rock carers in various places around the Hudson Valley that were kind of trail markers or places to leave law frames. And that was really intriguing, thought came up, but that's where we had working, because they were done more rather than, go and do a sort of a more in-depth analysis of this, and they felt that this was not characteristic of that, but we did pursue that. Edna had questions about the use of the interior of the garage, of the current proposed, and we provided some photographs of that, of the use of art studio and pickled things that people store. The other question that came up, I think, was for a sample of the color. I think so we have a colored chip here. Record.
Do you want to give that to Gretchen?
For the.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's the whole shelf.
And that dates to the age of the garage.
That is the garage.
Right, but I mean, it's not original to the house.
Yes, it wasn't on the original plan.
Right, the house was built, or the garage was added on sometime in the twenties or thirties.
We don't, I don't.
Right, but I was under the impression that that structure was specifically for autumn deals. And that was what I thought.
Although this ring here, water ring, was sort of interesting to. Could have washed the carriage with it.
Yeah, and Dr. Miller was, he ran Sulks, and he was the president of the Horsemen's League or something like that. He's the one who gave out all the awards at the Duchess County Fair, Vanderbilt, and to, you know, Askers, you know, he was the top guy there. So it's a, it's a pretty fascinating building, and I'm thankful that you're not.
Messing with the. Terry's stuff. Yeah, we love it, and we want to preserve the interior.
Yes, and all the things like that, the little pootromont that don't really have a use.
Yeah.
You're just, you're keeping them.
Particularly the doors.
Yeah, you can see they really don't function very well.
Yeah, they're very large historic doors, and in fact, the previous owners, I don't know if it was approved, but they had a plan to take those doors out and put a wall.
It was actually approved. It was a double way that were entered, yeah.
Yes, under some objection.
Yeah. But. So these doors are great. So we're good.
Um, Jim?
I don't have anything new. We talked about the archaeological investigation. Another thing I noticed, we did get a letter from H A P A C, and they had stated something to the effect of the garage could be moved forward to avoid any conflict or damage to lost historic material. The floor slide could be elevated to eliminate pounding on the blacktop. I don't know, weren't a few.
We're going to have a trash train in front of the doors, whatever.
Those of you who made the site visit, you wish to make other comments?
And then I went. Just first of all, thank you, I appreciate your willingness to even look into it further. And for just some context, the pile did look more disturbed, but just, just, I don't know, 20 feet from it, there was a particular standing stone that did have some alignment. So it just created curiosity for this pile to say, hey, the footing's going to go right there, it's going to pick it up, is it worth exploring further? Because there's next to it something else that does have more unique findings. So that's just the context to it. So thank you for even being willing to. In general, like, the care clearly to the design and how it impacts the site is being really well thought out. You're not going to see it, especially with that dark color from the road, from what it looks like. And the water concern, just from the natural geography, did come up, but it sounds like that's something that's being addressed. So from a design standpoint, the way in which it's placed and the natural landscape seems thoughtful to me, and I'm no concern.
Who, who else?
Edna.
Edna?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree with all of that. What did you decide on drainage? Are you raising the?
I, we actually had the foundations chapped out this week, and he thought actually it should be a little raised with an edge. And he said there's, the drainage naturally comes down off here. So there's a natural drain to a ready, it's like, it's like all the water drains towards the front of the house. So, the response.
The other issue was the garage that previously was used as a garage is now to be used as a, I think, an art studio. And as you can see from the photos, it should be a very lovely art studio. But it is an additional large room in a house now, and so the question came up for this board about whether or not there's any need to look at it as a potential maintenance. And that is why I asked for some sort of photos or, the floor plan is kind of hard for me to understand, because it's rippled and it's, you know, it's wall. I don't know, can someone explain what everything is there?
Sure. So this image actually on the left is the one that was approved by this board two years ago, replacing the three disneying doors with a large double overhead door that had like an entrance, a mudroom entrance with side light and transom, which was not done, again. And you can see the plan for that was to be two-car garage with a double door, and then just entry, a pedestrian entry into the garage, and there is a utility room. And then this is actually a changing room for the pool, which is out back. So that, but none of that was done. Well, like you say, as you can see, none of that was done. The overhead door wasn't put in, and the pedestrian door wasn't put in. There is a utility room here, and I believe there is a little changing room at the back, right? There's something like that.
Yeah, so what's happening here is that this is actually two boilers, two gas furnaces, and there's a, this is walled in, and this is not opening in this way, this opens out there and that's like a change room. So that's opening this way. So effectively, in this room, you've got, you know, the two boilers, you've got, you know, water facilities for that kind of thing in there. So we obviously have a need for it to be a bedroom. It would not be a pleasant bedroom.
It is, it is conditioned, however, right? It's heated and cooled.
No.
No, it's a lot of condition.
There is, there is an old-style steam heater that's connected in the top corner of the room that could be used. It's a very old-fashioned kind of thing that runs off the boiler. So it's not, it's not conditioned for habitation.
Are you proposing any changes in insulation, anything different with the garage doors? I mean, if you were to take everything out of there, it'd still be a garage, doors still open? Or are you proposing?
I don't want to touch the doors.
No, no, I was thinking, are you, are you insulating anything? Are you weatherizing anything? Are you making any significant change in the interior? Or if you were to move one day and take everything out, would it still be considered a garage? I guess that's what I'm asking, if someone walked in, would they consider something of the garage?
Yeah, yeah, because we're not doing anything structural in there, we're not changing those doors. I mean, I might put some tape down.
But no walls.
To seal it.
But it is going to be used as an art studio, right?
It's an art studio, storage. So, you know, we need the storage to have a place for your cars. So we use it for some storage for sort of cleaners, garden tools and other things like that. That's why we have that barrier there, that partition, and the rest would be for all our art studio.
Which is for gaming or?
Yeah.
I've been in the garage, and it's just glass. It is, it's not like any bedroom I would want.
Well, I would say this is, the house is 7,000 square feet, and if you have six bedrooms, it's just a pad, so adding a bedroom would make a lot of sense here.
No, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's beautiful. Beautiful space, but it doesn't lend itself to becoming a bedroom. I get, I get the point, and we've super looked at this before, but in this case, I just don't think it's a reasonable word.
If you scroll down, I think there's another photo. Yeah. Yes, here. So you can see this is looking, this is the sealed off, this is where the furnaces are, into that wall. So, and they're quite noise-dual furnaces. Frankly, I'd love to be G F M.
Anything else?
Or a drink? Since the question came up.
I'll pull the board about the concerns that were raised in the field about the potential for this being another bedroom, so I'll just pull. So what are your thoughts?
I, I'm really grateful that Edna asked the question, and it feels more complete, knowing the fullness of the use, but I don't have any concern after a safe visit.
Sharon?
Yeah, I don't see it as a danger.
The floor is concrete? Is it concrete, the floor?
It's concrete, painted, yeah, I guess so.
I mean, you know, without, without any serious work to it, it doesn't seem like it would be better, when I think as long as we can hope and trust that that's what we are walking into, then.
I think it's more likely to be, if we're not, for the honesty of people, it's more likely to be converted into a little suite, you know, where you have a bedroom and a sitting room and an accessory.
And a bathroom and things like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the doors aren't even rough. So, yeah, I, I think you would have to do something.
All that would have to do for that.
You would have to seal that off and you'd have to do some serious sealing of the furnace room, um, both for audio and, um, I don't know.
Well, personally, I don't think here.
Yeah, and the windows are all, you know, done with glazed windows. So it, it's a bit of a tough, it's not really a four season kind of thing.
You might want to bundle a lot.
Yes.
Any more comments or just specifically about the garage?
Uh, at this point, I'm following the words specifically about the garage.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't think it counts or should potentially count as a, as a building.
Doesn't, uh, lends itself to be used.
And now, are you satisfied?
Yeah, but I, Delise and I didn't have enough material to go in there. And so, you know, we need it to be raised so that the entire board would have an opportunity all time.
Okay.
It's just something I wonder about in general. I mean, you put a cot in the kitchen and then, you know, does that make the kitchen into a bedroom? You know, where, what are the criteria? And I know before we've discussed the, um, egress and, you know, things like that. The fact that it's got at, at grade entrance doors that go all the way down to the pavement. You know, nobody wants to sleep under those conditions, I don't think.
That's why I said, that's what I'm saying.
Definitely not, sorry.
All right.
Nice.
Um, anything else for the planning board members?
About the application in general. I just, um, I did read through the Harton, um, archaeology report. They do seem, um, really focused on the pre-contact, uh, findings and are a little less interested in the, you know, 19th century debris that, uh, but I, I think it's really fascinating that they did find brick from a particular period of construction. And, uh, that doesn't seem to relate to, uh, well, it might be to the house itself. Uh, but I would like to know, you know, is that brick batch, the brick that's in the house? Or was it part of a different structure? I was, uh, trying to remember when I looked into this a couple of years ago, that there were some structures behind the carriage house. I think there was a greenhouse back there and a potting shed. So this could possibly be the foundations or the remains of a, a knee wall for the, for the greenhouse or possibly the structure from the chimney of the, of the potting shed. Um, and, uh, it is an important site and I hope more gets learned about it. And I would encourage you to stay interested.
We are, we are doing as much historical study as we can. I will say that not far, it's in our neighbor's yard, uh, backyard, there is the remnants of a demolished structure of some kind. So when you say, um, potting shed or something, it could well be that. It's like a stone base.
Right.
Um, we have other bricks around the house of different age. You know, I, I, I don't know if you can tell otherwise, but the only way you see them is by looking at the top. Um, and of course, in the house itself, you can't see that. If you look at the ones on the remnants. So there's a lot of different types around. And there's been patching that has happened.
Right. Uh, there, there is, it's not diagnostic, but you can measure the, you know, the length and the height of the brick, which varies, uh, among different, uh, you know, manufacturers, yeah, sort of thing. Also, I did, in early research, come across a, a letter press, uh, index from Columbia University, where they have collected all of the letters, uh, that were sent to us, Stanford White. And they give the dates and the names of the people who were writing to him. And in the 1890s, Dr. George Miller had correspondence with Stanford White. It implied he was active and, and designing things for him. So you could potentially, if you wanted to go down to Hager's Library, could go and do some research into that.
Yeah, you could do some.
Uh, you know, there's a lot there to be learned, so.
Yeah, it's great, Mr.. We're very happy to have the, uh, some of the regional sketches.
All right. Anything, anything else? What you have to be humble? This time I'll ask for motion, go to the chair.
I will, so move.
Second. Second. I'll go as a favor. I oppose, Jim, the procedural resolution.
Approved.
Yeah, home side.
Uh, draft approval resolution for the board's consideration for the application by Christopher Travers for site plan approval under town code chapter 125 for construction of the detached garage at 500 through 308. Then the RC5 reaffirming the action is type two for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. Based upon review, the submitted information finding that proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. With respect to application for site plan approval, finding the work intended to be consistent with town code chapter 125, approving the application including the materials and plans of our Temple Smith Architects LLC. Date November 5th, 2024, revised January 13th, 2025. Uh, I'm sorry, November 5th, 2024, revised January 13th, 2025. Authorizing planning board chair's stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the three conditions listed. And just noting, uh, again, that in taking this action, the planning board authorized the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant along with details on next steps required to finalize the process. And remind you that all plan schedules on the materials submitted to the town around that building department. Any required permits, including smoking or alcohol, which are completion must match the materials approved by the planning board.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Uh, call for.
Aye.
Edna. Aye.
Aye.
Chad, five, please, aye. I know that.
Thanks very much. To the consideration of.
Um, last public hearing for this evening before we take up some old business and CBA stuff, is that Tim Herman's and Andy Paul, who are on the board, should be, is that claiming to you as question?
No, I'm gonna leave now and address my point.
Okay. Hope you feel that way. Thank you.
Okay.
Last and hopefully least, Aunt Tim Herman's, uh, on behalf of my partner, Anya. And we are here, um, well, to fill the, not so well, we are, well, try to, uh, well, no. Mostly to replace, uh, in behind some windows and, uh, get approval for a fence that was already built and a shed.
Can you, you have anything?
So the fire department chief wrote and said that he didn't have an issue with the, uh, the fence and the LE requirement from their perspective, so there's no issue there. So that takes care of my concern with that. Um, we did ask for some additional information about exactly which windows were going to go where, um, where the door was going to go and all that. I believe we received that today.
Yes.
So we did get some information today, um, which I have downloaded, but I have not taken a look at it. I think I asked, but we do have, uh, information to submit in. Uh, but I think these letters line up with where they're going to go. We haven't looked at this yet, even in the house itself. Which is kind of what we were asking for, because there were a lot of windows to be replaced. We wanted to know which ones could go where. So we have that information now. Um, and then I think we also received information on what was where. You gave us the many details too. I, I just haven't had time to.
Yeah, I, I, I think you asked for a cut sheet and couldn't find anything on, on their site, some names, but.
We gave us this. This is what I think.
Yeah.
So these will match up with these somewhere. I just have not done that.
I think you showed, uh, the. Showed the, uh, the prior sketch.
Well, that, that came in before. So this is all a different, uh, design. These have been tied to, I don't think they're tied to the other option, that's all.
Oh, okay, I see.
So we have the information that's been requested, so.
Okay. Uh, Sean and I did the second, so would you like to be there, sir?
All right.
Thank you.
Um, so one of, one of the items that we were looking at was definitely the fence in the backyard. Um, you did match it to the neighbor's fence in the backyard. You do have some decent visibility from the side, straight on. It don't, it does match. Um, we didn't see any major significant issue. Again, if we were possibly there beforehand, we would have made some different suggestions, but it does match and it makes sense why they matched it with what was, um, the neighbor was using. Um, there is, um, as far as the backyard is considered, there is, um, there, where they're gonna be doing the additional work, the door, it makes sense. Um, they have quite a steep stairway up, as you can see there. Uh, to the left, there's a door, but it's more of a like a garage-ish area. I believe that enters to your office, correct? Isn't that where your office is?
Yeah, this is, this is the office here. This is, uh, where the furnace is.
Yeah, so there's like minor storage areas. It, it does make sense putting a door there. Um, I don't believe that window is original if I, um, from, from the site visit. Um, it, everything we're looking to do at the bottom line makes sense. Um, and then the only other thing I know that we did discuss while we were there was the front steps are in some rough shape. Yeah. Um, and you'd mentioned that and basically someone had just coated them with a, a top layer cement, put a little paint on it, um, to make it look. And I know that we did discuss if there's anything else that you wanted to potentially look at and I just didn't know if you had.
Yeah, well, the, the steps, actually, we did have, we did have the top scraped off and repainted.
Okay.
So that was just done, yeah.
Okay. Um, other than that, um, it's a great house and a very steep though.
Yeah.
Um, I would compare with everything Sean said. Um, we might feel a little bit differently about the fence. Um, could we wear it in a more, um, visible location? It, it, literally this house sits, um, astride a hill.
Yeah.
With a property behind it.
Literally, it's a, it's a very steep hill, you know?
You, I don't, the only people that are going to see this fence at all are the neighbors behind and the neighbors beside. Um, it's not at all in any way visible from the street. Um, maybe from a drone someday, but, but, um, literally, were this in a more prominent location, we might be having a somewhat different discussion, but it is literally invisible from anywhere other than these two neighbors. And the fence in the back that is the neighbor's fence, not on your property, um, could use some work of its own. So, uh, this is an improvement over what was there and, uh, I know where. And, and if you're looking at it obliquely, as, as Sean said, you can see daylight through it. It's when you're standing right in front of it. But I think in this case, it's mitigated by, it's, um, absolutely, um, impossible to see from anywhere. So that's all I need now.
Can I ask you guys one question? Wasn't there some crime investigation for the area under the deck? There was stone that was, you know?
It's blue stone.
It's just all clean.
It's done.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just blue stone.
And reversible?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it made, like, made it there and the comments, so it makes sense for it to turn. I, I was.
Any other questions from the board? And the public?
Well, I'll speak to the public. Speaking, um, to what you were saying about, about visibility of what needs to be done, being one of the culprits of having done stuff without a permit, I think anything that you can do to help the community know what needs to be done would be very, very welcome.
Well, we're all pondering that. And some, a, a nameless person suggested sort of flashing lights at both entrances to Ryan Cliff saying, "Do not enter unless you have a permit." I doubt that we're going that far, but, um, one thing you can do is just pass the word around rather.
Which we, yeah, which we have been doing.
It's a, it's a small community and, you know, we don't, we don't wanna hold people up, but having to go back to go forward holds everybody up. So, um, if there's nobody from the public wishing to comment, may I ask for motion, post public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Almost in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, extension. We have a draft, uh, approving resolution.
Disagreed. Uh, draft approval resolution for the board's consideration for Tim Herman's and Andy Paul for site plan special use permit under town code chapter 125. To remove window, replace the door, closing oil tanks and beverage bins. Insulate shed, paint the home, retroactively approve the already changed ground cover of the deck and install fence within the RCH and RCO overlay. Reaffirming the actions type two for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. With respect to application for special use permit, finding the proposed work intended to be consistent with the general standards and granting special use permit, condition upon site plan approval. And with respect to site plan approval, finding the work intended to be consistent with town code chapter 125, approving the application and including materials and site plan by deck or surveying. Date August 25th, 2024, revised November 26th, 2024. Authorizing planning board chair's stamp and sign the above cited site plan subject to the three items listed there. And again, authorizing the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant along with details for next steps. And remind the applicant that all plan schedules on the materials submitted to the building department must match those given to the planning.
I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call for.
Aye.
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Eric? Aye. Delise, I go now.
Aye.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Under old business, we have, uh, we recall the application for Shipac and Craig Shipway 26 White School House from Burrow. Site plan and special use permit for the construction of two accessory buildings. I believe, um, that the applicant has received the Department of Health approval. However, they have not received the DEC jurisdictional certification.
As far as I can tell.
As far as we, like, we're in a position of still having to continue this.
So do we just put on the April 21st agenda under old business?
We can, we can do that, um, in an attempt and fingers crossed, um, that we have the permission. So I can take a motion to put it on, to continue it until the April 21st agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, a second, almost in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. We have two CBA referrals which I'll ask Jim to run us through after we're done.
Go as quickly as I can. I have somebody who don't want to be hanging on for tonight.
I think not.
All right. Uh, starting off, we have two CBA referrals. The first one is Oxy and Promancer of the open, the plans. And this is down, um, just outside of the Ryan Cliff overlay. I can pull up the area if you want. And essentially, it is a very small lot. It's very narrow, uh, and a bit long. It used to have a house on it. That house was removed and it was in this position here. Uh, the driveway kind of comes in and it kind of scoops its way in here. And what they're proposing to do is build a house back here. With the driveway, they need variances for, let's see, they need two. Uh, side yard setbacks, uh, 31 and 0.3 feet and 30.9 feet or 50 feet are required. Uh, again, there was a house previously on the site, though in a different location. Um, this does about the overlay, so as we know, they're very small lots and they can be, you know, pretty unique in terms of their layout. So I don't think that this is necessarily a one-off. It is generally consistent with what's in the area. Um, as far as I'm concerned, as long as the applicant can obtain county health department approval, I don't see real significant planning environmental issues with the requested variances of, you know, 20 feet. So my recommendation was that we submit the, um, independent typical review, uh, referral that we do, which is that the side yard variance setback requests to construct a home on the lot. Previously, so they had the homeless demolished rates, no significant planning environmental concerns. And they were lying upon their own study of the fact and decided the application along with consideration of neighboring neighbors.
Questions, comments?
Was this a tear down? Did somebody buy a house with the intention of tearing it down so that they could build a, on a non-conforming?
I believe it was torn down before it was sold to the current owner.
Yeah, the previous owner tore it down.
When, when did that, in recent years or was this a long time ago?
I think it's last five to 10 minutes.
I don't know either. I seem to recall, I seem to recall when we did the pre-con, we were talking about that. It was too bad the house was gone because they could have grandfathered the setbacks.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I have a lot of trouble with the issue of tear downs. And I think it's a really disturbing trend where people will pay a lot of money for a very simple house with the intention of tearing it down and building something that they want. And I don't think that's a very sensible practice for a town to allow if we're involved with preserving our history and also, you know, being good stewards of the environment because it's so impactful.
I think your point's well taken, but if it precedes the current ownership, we can't really call them.
I know, but it's worn down in 2020 or 2021. It shows up on the 20 area here, but not in 21.
Didn't they run into that trouble on, uh, Montgomery Street and, uh, Post Road, uh, Quattro Foil? The little.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and they, they still haven't rebuilt because they don't have the, uh, area for the septic. You know, there are a lot of things because of the restrictions of the lot that worked with an existing house, and then you take the house out, and unfortunately, those protections go with it. So I would be disinclined to carry those over just because, well, there was a house there before that was non-conforming. So are they able to build within, what's, what's the request for the variance?
Uh, it's about 20 feet for each side yard setback.
Area variance?
Yeah.
And there's no way that they can build other lots?
I've seen the lot, I've got the, the parcel, this is, this is the lot, it's on the end of David Way.
Uh-huh, and 66 feet from each?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a very small lot.
Eighty-sixteen.
And they need a 20-foot?
Very tiny though.
They're supposed to have 50 feet on either side, they can only get about 30. And, and, you know, in terms of ownership, I don't know, because the owner is the same name as the road, so maybe it has been in the building for a while, I couldn't tell you, but.
Those, yeah.
Yes.
I think a few of those lots were.
Sean?
I'll see.
I think we're just referring, we're just on the board of appeals, it's gonna make a decision.
Right, yeah, it's just about the variance.
Yeah, I mean, it's, what else are you gonna do with a lot? It's only, it's the house on it, back to back, it doesn't mean the house is doing that kind of, but for our sake, yeah, it's a ZBA issue.
So you have Jim's recommendation, you have a motion. So moved, motion second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I'll abstain.
I, I'm not really sure where I come down on this, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
Okay. Tear down.
I think I'm not voting.
Uh, case number 1074, T Court, LLC.
Yeah, so, um, I will run through this one really quickly, and I'll tell you upfront that my recommendation for you is to not, um, is to ask the ZBA not to make, take any action on this, and I don't think they will in, in the near term. Uh, T Court LLCs you heard earlier today need several variances in order to do what they want to do for the train loop. Um, they need a height variance for the, um, trestle with the bridge span having a maximum height greater than 20 feet. They need a variance, um, for 29 and a half feet, the east loop needs a variance for the bridge that goes up to 51 feet. Height variances have been requested, uh, the east loop is proposing a covered platform of 484 square feet where the, the train that everyone will ride on will stop. Um, that one, and the 600 square foot conservancy storage building, both need variances, both from the number of structures, accessory structures on the site as well as the overall size. Some need variances from that. They also need front yard setback variances, um, I think for the observatory, if I remember correctly. So my response back, and I'm happy to edit it, is essentially somebody the effect of, given the somewhat substantial nature of the project elements and associated variances, we recommend the planning board, I recommend the planning board respond with the request to the ZBA, all public hearing open, not make a determination on the variances until the planning board's had some time to review the plans and undertake a site visit for the site line application, obtain professional review comments, and can assess the variance requests having or fully assessed the project and specifics related to these variances. I also recommend the ZBA request for renderings of the proposed structures, because I don't think they actually had the implications in their application, but I do not think they did.
I, I am personally very happy with that.
It's well written.
It's well written, there was a lot to digest tonight, and I think the site visit will be very revealing, um, in terms of what you're gonna see now, in the current state, and what you will see in the future. I certainly wouldn't be prepared to give the, um, ZBA any measured opinion, it's simple.
Yeah, I'd like to take a closer look at the facts also.
Okay, man, your motion, uh, to accept Jim's recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Extension, motion carries. Uh, lastly, we have two, uh, ZA sign referrals, one is for the tasting room, and one is for Encore here.
Yes. Let's start with Encore here, I think that one might be a little bit quicker. Um, Encore here is located in Astor Square.
Yes.
All right, Astor Square. Um, it is an existing sign, as you know, we've had a few of these come in, Brian, zoning administrator, trying to work with, um, both the property owner, as well as those who have space in there to, to kind of bring the signs into more compliance, but we're hoping to do it through a master plan, which we have obviously not developed yet. Uh, but he has worked with Encore here, they had a number of signs, I guess, and they essentially pulled it down to this one, which is both their directional sign, um, and it tells people where to go, and the one sign that we think is generally consistent with where we think we're gonna head with the master plan. Uh, I did coordinate with Brian a little bit on this, and he said that he thinks this will generally fit with where we can head it. So my recommendation is that, um, the planning board, uh, find the sign is appropriate for the proposed use at Astor Square, requesting the ZA ensure it is consistent with the upcoming master plan idea, so they have to go and have a valid sign, no additional review will be required in the future. I don't see a problem based on where we think we're gonna go, and it is.
This that can know the building is on the back side, um, so that when you park in the back can clearly indicate where you need to go. The idea, because this had suddenly become, you know, like, signs all over the place there. So this moves in the right direction, I think.
There also a sign on the door, like a decal on the door?
I think he said that was coming off.
It's like the reflection.
No, there was one on the door.
Was there?
But I believe that there was one on the door, and there was one in another place, they had three, and Brian said he can only have the one, so the idea is to leave it. This exists, I believe, right now. The idea is to just have that sign.
Okay.
But he was good with it, and again, if it's generally consistent with the order, we'll go ahead with the master plan, I think that makes sense.
I would support that.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion, second.
I would also say, I'm not opposed to some reduced signage on a door, especially there's two doors next to each other, but, um, not.
Is this in the old Allstate, I think it's in where Allstate?
Allstate was up front.
Allstate's in the front, but you entered from the back, and then we were two doors to the door.
Hey, you know, those are airways.
Yeah, that picture that we saw a couple of weeks ago was, it was much bigger, and I think it was modest and practical.
Motion second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Uh, that brings us to the final.
The tasting room.
The tasting room.
Okay, so the tasting room is on 90, if anyone knows where it is, it's by Ruby's, um, in Sugar, uh, you know, it's that property. This was the old original tasting room sign, I just put it up there so you can see what it used to be. Uh, what they have up there now had up there, I should say, was this, is this white sign, I'm not sure if anyone recognizes. What they liked to do was put up this black one, maybe it's up already, you drove by on the way in, um, I think it's up already, this tasting room sign. And so, um, what has been proposed, um, or that's in, that's asking for approval, um, actually has a number of issues. Um, they need a variance not only from the size, because it's a double-sided sign, and you can only have 12 square feet, which makes it too big, um, but the lettering on the sign, which includes the sign and the logo and everything else, can only be 60% of the sign, and this takes up the vast majority of the sign on both sides. So, um, they apply to the ZBA for the size of the sign, but not for the lettering. So I think that that's maybe something they're gonna have to add, and I would make that recommendation. I think the sign is, is a vast improvement over the white one myself. Um, I think the white sign is not consistent with kind of the logo going for on the entry way to the corridor, so I don't necessarily have an issue with it from a design perspective, but unfortunately, it just doesn't meet the code, which you know is pretty strict. So, um, I didn't know where everyone was gonna land on this, in terms of what you wanted to do for referral, but I believe they need both the size variance and a variance from the lettering.
I know you could go to add on the lettering, that if they were to reduce the lettering, you wouldn't be able to read it number one, which means they have to increase the size of the board to make it compliant, which would be worse. I think it's very tasteful.
Which is kind of what you see on the white sign, right? It's much better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, because I, I drove by there all the time, and you don't, you usually see that sign too, you're almost on it. Um, in, in the old one.
Well, the thing that we confirmed in reviewing this, as I had vague recollections of it in the past, is this, uh, wrapped, it's by reservation, like, and it's very limited in seating. Um, so it isn't trying to convey that y'all come in, you know, where a restaurant opened, anybody driving by who wants to come in. So it doesn't change it, but it mitigates, you know, typically, you would know where you're going, so, um, I think some of that, you know, you're driving by and you can't read it.
It's very tasteful.
Um, see, is that a metal armature?
It's kind of like branch, it looks like it's got branches with, like, grain or something like that.
But it is on the old ones, so it's not a new addition.
Right, that was.
Yeah, but it brings up the same question, like, with the tree service, like, how much it, where does the sign end? And, you know, the little decorations on the end of the pole, do those count, or are those just veneers? They don't really care. I don't know, they don't use it.
Actually, we go through the process that we're going through, we'll address that, but it's not a change, it's, it certainly was there before, and I'm okay with letting it ride for now. I think if you, particularly because he's based everything on a one-sided fence, and this is really too.
The old sign, was that, uh, non-conforming?
I don't know.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, I know, but it, it, given the dimensions of the one you're taking out.
Yeah, it actually would have.
Would have been.
But any of these honestly would have been, this one would have been, this would have been as well, and so would this, because the way that you, the way that you measure the thing, so for this one, this essentially means almost the entire sign.
Yeah, it was all lettering, yeah.
And even on this one, we've completed just lettering, you know, and didn't even consider the border on it, it comes up to that, and it can't be over 60%, and that's definitely over 60. Um, but technically, the border on it also counts, all the logos and everything counts, so. But we'll leave it to the ZBA to determine what the numbers are, but I do believe that they need one for lettering as well.
I think when, uh, we spoke to Brian this morning in the pre-con about it, and he was gonna go back to Tony Reis, who was the, um, company that's working with him, and asked me to do the calculation for the square footage.
Now, that kind of olive branch motif that is the border there, that counts as a logo?
Because I would think that a logo is actually letters that make a shape that is, you know, part of the sign's identity, but because logos, part of logo is that it has something to do with language, not just a decoration.
The way that I read the code against up to Brian is that lettering is anything on the sign that's not blank space. If you look at the way the code is written, it only uses letters on there, but it also counts, you know, like, we looked at the, um, signs last time, we're talking about the logos.
Yeah.
Counting as part of the sign.
Right, I don't know, but if somebody just put a, just a line, just a circle around it, that would count as...
It would have to be considering.
Yeah, right.
But even, even without it, I think they're over 60%.
But like, the spine, the picture of the spine, I mean, that definitely is something that is specific to that, to that sign, you know, that that's representative of that business, um, you know, the spines and pines, uh, but, uh, you know, just a wreath or something like that, I don't know if it counts the same way.
Well, it's, it's, that's why I say, I, I think I would leave it to Brian and the ZBA to determine what they think the variance needs to be. I think they're over, but they didn't apply for that, so I think they just need to figure out.
Do I have a full one, here?
Something that, um, yeah, sorry.
I think it looks better.
I agree.
Much approved.
We need to have the issue signed, signed rights in town, and that's on the list. So somebody affected town running back planning board, under receiving a sign referral review request from the town zoning administrator for a sign by tasting room, finds the sign, size and lettering variance needs are tasteful and an improvement, and, uh, the lettering is okay, we recommend they, they address the, you know, percentages in overall, it's something I recognize, I did not try to do this.
Motion, please. So moved, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension. Um, just one last thing I'd say before asking Jim and, uh, Jim very quickly alluded to the fact that he's concluded his annual report, um, and we keep looking for opportunities to present it to you, but the unions drag on and you don't get to that. Okay, um, we will do it.